Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, February 11th. And we're meeting today on the traditional territory of the Council of Nations. The current council is on agenda. I'm hoping someone will move to pick out. I have my councillor, my councillor, my councillor, all those in favor. I suppose most of you are. First up is a delegation from Future House Sound Society. Welcome, Ruth.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councillor. Shall I?
Sit down, please.
Sit down, okay. My back to the people in the gallery, but thank you. I just, to clarify, I just saw the agenda. There's half an hour for this topic, but I can do this a lot shorter, so.
Okay.
I'm here as a follow-up to a presentation that our initiative working group gave at the How Sound Community Forum last fall. Councillor Elliott was able to be at that. At that particular presentation, we were lucky enough to have the Chair of the Canadian Commission of Men in the Biosphere presenting as well. I'm going to give you an overview of what a UNESCO biosphere is, what the benefits are, why we're doing this, why we're pursuing this, where we're at with this initiative, and then asking for your support, just as an indication for us to continue to explore this initiative. So if you want to ask questions along the way, I can do that, too. For those not familiar with what UNESCO the organization is, UNESCO stands for the United Nations Educational Scientific and Cultural Organization. The Men in the Biosphere program was established in 1970 when UNESCO realized that as population is growing, men or people are losing that connection with their national environment. So they formed this framework, launched in the 70s, to help promote and establish ongoing education, research, and ensure that people, as we take up more space in places that we live, appreciate and understand biodiversity and the importance of biodiversity, particularly in certain regions around the world. Their vision was that there would be an international network of these biosphere regions around the world, and today there are 670 biosphere regions. If you've been to Tofino, you've been to one of two B.C.'s UNESCO biosphere regions, at Clackwat Sound. If you've been to Parksville, you've been into a biosphere region. So the focus on the biosphere, man in the biosphere, has shifted away from conservation more towards that interaction of people in their environment, how they interact with that environment. And the intention is that the functions of a biosphere focus on the development within a particular region, conservation, and then providing logistical support in order to support all the ongoing research and education and programs that can help sustain a healthy biosphere. And there's three zones, which I'll explain a little further, within a biosphere, which is a core protected zone, then the transition zone, which is where people live, work, and play, and then the buffer zones in between. What a biosphere is not is it doesn't introduce any laws, doesn't create another level of government. It's there to support the ongoing goals that, which are currently governed under the territory or the state, as they call it, that the biosphere is in. So I think people might think that this is like UNESCO creates another level of rules or organization that would actually intervene or interfere, and it does not. I did provide, just brought with me some facts, which are, it's from UNESCO's website, so those are more brief background notes. I don't know if you have them yet. More on biospheres. At this, you know, can I answer your questions more about the actual structure of UNESCO and biosphere, but I'll just move on to what the benefits are and what, why I'm so excited about this particular initiative. I'd also like to clarify that I'm here as, I'm the Executive Director of the Future of How Sound Society, but this initiative is really a separate group. This is a, as people are coming in to help and get excited about this initiative, it's actually outside of Future of How Sound, but we're obviously big supporters of it. So the benefits of biosphere regions are that they would, again, provide that, it can provide funding, it can attract different types of funding. For instance, the Mount Aerosmith Biosphere Reserve on Vancouver Island is run out of the University of, Vancouver Island University, and that's a research institute. So there's different ways in which biosphere logistical support is structured. Whichever way it is, it can track different types of funding that can then go and help support either existing groups that are working on initiatives that fit the biosphere's goals, or it can help, obviously, to fund new activities and new action plans. It fosters sustainability. A lot of people have, think that word is watered down these days. However, when you look at the objectives of the biosphere region and you look within most of the official community plans and our assessment processes, they really are still all connected in terms of those goals towards the pillars of sustainability. And so it fosters sustainable development. It can, a biosphere region can become a leading example of how sustainable development can be done in an area. It helps shape the future. There's been a lot of talk about How Sound. There's lots of visioning being done, a lot of feedback as to what people envision for this area. And so it's through the dialogue that's fostered through this initiative and through being and achieving that status as a UNESCO biosphere region, that dialogue that helped shape that future vision. Obviously, the biospheres can also create a whole new level of opportunities for First Nations, for local economies, as they also become areas of traction. Many people might not even be aware that they're in a biosphere region, but there is opportunity for, for those that seek to travel to places that practice sustainable development, that are respectful of the environment, that they can become tourism destinations and places to learn. As we, you may have seen the, or not had a chance yet to look at, the Ocean Watch How Sound edition that was just released by the Vancouver Aquarium. It's a wonderful document that brings together, really, it's kind of a snapshot of where we are today, and it just demonstrates the number of groups that are already engaged in, you know, How Sound-related issues. So in there, there's statistics on how many youth come to camps in How Sound, how many research, how much research is being done in How Sound. So we have kind of a baseline, and this type of framework and logistical support can help advance and take this further. So it does help to increase recognition for the area. We can become a model, as I said. And one of the great advantages of this is it connects us to a network of other biospheres internationally, from who we can learn from, and then there's a level of accountability. Every 10 years, there's a review by UNESCO as to how we're doing. There's quite a number of resource materials if you want to learn more. There's a program now on television, it's actually TBO, but you can access it over the Internet, called Striking Balance. So there are hour-long documentaries on biosphere regions. And so Clackwat Sound is actually, there's an hour-long feature on Clackwat. So you get a sense of what, how First Nations are interacting in a biosphere region, how development is being enhanced and so on. So there's lots of resource material. So this is an aspirational goal. It takes some time, and what we're asking is for people just to kind of learn about it, do your own research, and engage with us in this conversation about what it can be. So, you know, just reiterating that it doesn't, as we said, create a level of regulatory. However, regions can be recognized as particular special areas so that when there's new development or there's new initiatives, that there's sort of a commitment to enter into a dialogue around it. It is a collaborative effort. So we already have the How Sound Community Forum. This, through the framework of a biosphere region, it brings more people into that conversation, and it creates ongoing sort of structure around discussions around how we are acting as a sustainable region. Future of How Sound Society and many others have been talking a long time about the need for a comprehensive plan for How Sound. So it's, when I went into the office of the Clackwat Sound Biosphere Trust and spoke to the staff there and understood the issues that that particular area faced and how they, this biosphere region today helps to support and facilitate better conversations in that area and also to help fund initiatives, it's, I felt, yeah, this is a very, this would be a really good framework to help sustain this, what we are doing today. So it does involve many different partners. There's a list, oh, I forgot to advance the slides while I was talking. They're just really pretty pictures.
I thought you thought you were doing it, but it's not changing.
There we go. Yeah. So, you know, this is a picture of the forum that we had on Gambler Island, and this is, right now, the forum is a forum for elected officials in three, in different levels of government. So taking this concept, we've had knowledge, we've had forums around the marine environment, models of biosphere, that we look at, biosphere regions and other areas, that, again, it just engages more people and stakeholders in conversation. So the main, one of the main objectives, of course, is to make sure that we do not degrade this amazing diversity, biological diversity that we have here in How Sound. That's why regions are chosen for their diversity, and we, looking at the nomination form, we believe that we've got, we are a very good candidate. So in How Sound, what would those, what would the biosphere region be? Right now, we have four maps that are for conversation. The first one was actually suggested when this concept, which is not a new one, several years ago, B.C. Spaces for Nature were, had initiated the idea that we would be, we would qualify as a biosphere region. So they'd kind of taken a smaller area of How Sound. There's a partial watershed option. There's a full watershed, How Sound watershed area, and then if you really look at what is the Squamish Nation Territory, you could actually expand it much broader, which would be much more challenging because you have many, many more stakeholders. So right now, we have not made any decisions, but if we look at the entire watershed of How Sound, and we look at the three core important aspects of a biosphere, the large green circles represent all what are currently core protected areas. So most of them are up at the higher elevations, but we are pretty, we have a lot of protected area, actually, in How Sound. So that's good news. The yellow areas are where there's human interaction, where people live, work, and play. And then the pinkish area is what is the unceded territory of Squamish Nation or Crown Land. So that's what you would regard as the buffer area. And then we have certain areas of the marine environment that you could be, would be considered to be core protected as well. So this, this process helps us to actually learn more about our area already. So what our group has been doing, and last May was when we first came together, and in that time, we've been attracting all kinds of interested people who have some time to dedicate to starting to work through, like, right now, we're learning, and we're also communicating out and asking for, and seeing if people support this concept. So we've been doing research, as in actually doing road trips, we've met with other people involved in biospheres. We have received a lot of good support. We have our Member of Parliament is quite excited about this initiative. Our MLA, Jordan Sturdy, and the Flynnrow Forest Lands Natural Resource Operations that's working on the Kimmel of the Fox Assessment are very supportive of this. We've met with Squamish Nation Chiefs and Councilmember, and they are interested. We, the one thing about the biosphere and the United Nations, of course, is that it helps to promote the UN declarations on the rights of Indigenous people and human rights. So it's about how do we make that work? How do we just demonstrate that in How Sound? We're already doing so much of this good work already. So we need to continue that. This is not something that we, you know, if once established that we do this sort of as an entity that carries on without, very much engaged with the First Nations. I think that's, I'll leave it there, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. We do have questions. Councillor Waze and Councillor K.
Thank you. And actually, I put my hand up before you moved the slide ahead. And my question is, what would the boundaries look like?
Right.
And particularly the core areas, and so the slides show that, the existing parks and so forth.
Yeah.
But then you mentioned some of the marine areas might become core areas as well. Can you expand on that? And what might be able to happen in a marine area that is considered a core area?
There's quite a broad, broad range of what UNESCO considers core. It's meant to be essentially for conservation, so to promote, so that, again, the biodiversity of the area can be healthy. So for instance, right now, we have restricted, we have conservation zones, so there's restricted fishing in How Sound, and those blue dots actually show that. So there's rockfish conservation zones already in How Sound. Halkett Bay Marine Park, that big blue dot off the south of Gambler Island, has just been expanded as a protected area, so it falls under the Halkett Bay Marine Park area for protection of the glass sponge reefs. The intention of it is that there would be an identification that this particular area of the marine environment is, needs to be protected for, as it promotes healthy, the food chain. So the reason that rockfish are protected right now is because rockfish, for instance, are an endangered species, and they take so long to reproduce, so that's why there's limited fishing in that area. So there can be a range from full protection, as in no pronging, no fishing, in this particular area of the glass sponges, to a partial fishing ban. Does that answer your question?
I guess partly, but so, it's fair to say it would be more directed at the bottom and the water column as opposed to the surface? And the reason I ask that is because, you know, I've been in How Sound voting since I was in my early teens, and there's probably not a square inch of How Sound that isn't covered by recreational or commercial traffic today.
Right.
In some form.
Sure. Well, there's shoreline protection programs that would be, this would, biosphere region would support the reading of the foreshore, so good practices, so best practices, so clean marine best practices. So it's really not introducing anything that we don't already know we should be doing, but it's in support of those best practices. So from, you know, preventing pollution, preventing oil spills, preventing harm to the glass sponge reefs. It's about promoting good practices.
Thank you. Do you have any?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, actually. Just looking at it, does UNESCO ensure that the biosphere reserves function properly on the table that you provided here? It says that it's governed by a soft law, the statutory framework for biosphere reserves. So that, just my question is, it says, it rather, it uses existing legal frameworks for nature protection and land and water management, so that's, it adds an extra layer on top of what is pre-existing? Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, what it, it doesn't get in the way of existing law, but what it, what the objectives are, so when you become established, you actually create a set of action plans or objectives, which could be, for instance, promoting, you know, how do we, and this would be, again, with input from the stakeholders, how do we promote best practices in foreshore development to prevent oil spills, to prevent harm to the environment? So if that was an action plan, then you have ongoing review, so the framework means that you're recognized as having these as goals that are supported by the various stakeholders.
And would that, and how would that be enforceable, then?
It's enforceable by reputation. For instance, there are biosphere regions in the United States right now that unfortunately have failed to report, and they will lose their status.
My other question. You don't have any, or do you have any data on some of the cases that you mentioned? Like you said, you visited Aerosmith, and you visited Clayfoot, and I'm just curious as to who the partners might be there? Do you have anything you could show us or direct us towards that shows?
Definitely their websites.
Yeah.
I don't have links to that right here, right now, but I really encourage you to look at the Striking Balance. I can follow up with links to that.
Sure, why not?
Because it's really a lovely video, and it interviews with various partners.
Be nice to see what their costs are and who the partners are, all the players.
Well, in the case of Clackwat Sound, they were given a $12 million trust fund that they would, they operate off the interest of. So you might be aware of Warren Woods that took place over there, so this was part of that. How do we, you know, make up for all of that? And so theirs is unique in that they have that kind of ongoing funding. Whereas at Mount Aerosmith, the whole research institute is funded through the university.
Thank you.
And what's good about the, at Mount Aerosmith is, what they're really proud of is that, because most of the Crown Land over there is owned by forestry companies, or is controlled by the forestry companies, they've been able to bring the First Nations together with the forestry companies, which has, in a safe, kind of a safe place, that hasn't happened before, so they're seeing benefits to that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the presentation.
Can you just look back to the picture of all the people there? Well, I just wondered if you could see, if you could see our little mayor's face down there, so.
Black Harris there, too. Sarah Mcgann is there.
Yeah, anyway, we are at the table.
Yeah.
I'm not, but I know we are. And I, I mean, I think it's a really worthwhile project. Myself, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't move into gear on it. And, you know, you say it, visit our website, all that kind of stuff, and I don't know. I mean, the mayor's going to the meetings, and so, you know, she's pretty smart on all this stuff, but I would support moving forward on it if we haven't already.
Yeah, the suggested resolution or request takes from the Principles for Cooperation that were signed onto in 2002, and they really line up with the intentions of a biosphere region.
I miss the meeting where it was such a present, unfortunately. I know Councillor Elliott was there, and she did bring you back to this table, and I think we were anticipating coming to sort of a presentation like this so we could know more about it and get room in it on it. Councillor Scott.
Thank you. I really like the idea of a biosphere, because I, the difference, often I think people think of World Heritage Sites as the same as biospheres.
Yeah.
But biospheres are really protected areas that are for education and best practices as opposed to restrictions. So they, you know, I think there could be concern about industry being in the area, that it really doesn't restrict industry in the area, but it does ensure that industry is held to best practices and participates in the, in education on best practices. So I really like the idea of designating that and having interaction with industry to ensure that we are protecting an extremely valuable area in our region. And I'm just wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit to the difference between World Heritage Site and a biosphere?
Yeah, World Heritage Site, actually, in the handout that they've given me, there's, that World Heritage Sites really look at areas that provide, have international values, and that they're pretty much, they're really already protected, and they would, you know, be forever protection. So, and it's also a completely different channel as to how they get approved. So when Minister McKenna was offering, you know, nominations for World Heritage Sites, that would go directly through Parks Canada, and Sailor's Sea Trust actually is, has a nomination for that, so that would be wonderful. And right now, the Sailor's Sea is not protected, so that would be, that would be different. But they're typically heritage sites and, as I said, areas that would demonstrate great value, like being protected forever. Whereas the, so the biosphere regions go through, go, the nomination form goes to Ottawa to Canadian Commission of Men in the Biosphere. And then it gets sent through, I think it still is through international fairs over to UNESCO.
Would we get, would it be the same thing as, like, the georeferencing that's required and the information collection that's required to maintain the site? That will be done by either the How Sound Community Forum or some other entity that's...
Right, yeah. So then the nomination form, which is very lengthy, and this is a long process, so, but we're excited. I mean, the How Sound Watch Report brings together lots of data already, so it's just a matter of having the resources and the time to put it all together.
Thank you. And I do, if anyone wants to ask a question to the panel, please, yeah.
Thank you. It just, I mean, on the basis of it, it's hard to say, why would not we do this? And I, and I think we should, and I'm just sort of trying to say, so where is the goal? What do we hope to get out of this? And, and so there's, when you talk about, for example, issues in the marine environment, those are typically senior governments. I mean, we get a little bit of zoning and water loss and stuff at local government level, but when you're talking about closing areas from fishing and so forth, that's all senior government stuff. But it seems to me that the goal of this, from a local government perspective, would be to inform community planners, CPs, and then in that way actually transfer the policy to the ground, if you like, to actually make it affect land use. Is that what happens? I mean, are there examples of that, even the local ones or other parts of Canada? Is that what will sort of evolve over time?
Yeah. I wish I had some very specific examples, but that's, that would be, could be, and this is really, we can shape it, like, if the How Sound Community Forum identifies areas where logistical support of a biosphere region would, could fill in and provide those resources, such as mapping or such as collection of data and help to inform. But yes, I mean, the Kimmel of the Fox Assessment is going to help inform local planning as well. Eric?
Yes, Erica, speaking on behalf of the Squamishon District Forestry Association, two quick points. The How Sound Forum is an entity that we participate in or can only participate in as observers, and we're not alone, and Ruth and I are former colleagues on the Sea to Sky Clean Air Society, and also a frustration for groups like that, that we are not participants in the How Sound Forum, so that so far, there is no mechanism really to bring in non-governmental, non-First Nations stakeholders into the dialogue. Now, I'm aware that Ruth's proposal has been brought before the Chamber of Commerce, and that's a really welcome initiative, and we will, with my colleagues here, facilitate that as soon as we can. But I just wanted to make that observation, that we're not yet part of the conversation. And we are not, we, yes, the Gambler Island event is open to perpetrators and such as else, but it is an isolated location, so that's one point. The other is that we have...
I'll quickly respond to that, if that's right. Yeah, just so people understand, the How Sound Community Forum is a forum of elected officials and was designed as such, and municipalities around How Sound and regional districts, and I would stress, have signed on to this opportunity... regional districts, and I would stress, have signed on to this, um, opportunity to have dialogue and create the dialogue. It's only elected officials currently. My first committee forum, I think it was eight or 10 people at it, and we sat there sort of figured, kind of, this was 11 years ago, about what does this mean, what's this for, I don't understand. And it's turned into, I mean, I think it was almost 100 people at this one, half of which were observers. And I'll tell you right now, everyone who's an observer in that room has a way to at least get their topics. I have people whispering my ear all the time, can you ask this question? You clarified this for me. So, I mean, as elected officials, we're there to help represent and bring those issues to the table. Yes, you're currently not sitting at that table, but I think something like this can actually help to facilitate a more comprehensive, more diverse group, um, that can, that can input into the idea of, of some sort of convergence or something that helps us all be mindful and, um, thinking about all the aspects of House Sound. So yeah, there's always ways to get your topics addressed at House on Committee Forums. Erica, you just have to whisper it.
Uh, the, the second point or observation I would make is that, and I'm quote here from your frequently asked questions, "A biosphere will utilize existing legal frameworks for protection and land-water management." We have an existing set of planning frameworks, the Squamish Estuary Management Plan, the Land and Resource Management Plan for the Sea to Sky, and the equivalent for the Sunshine Coast, and there is a gap, part of the House Sound region is not covered by such a, an arrangement. We have the Squamish Nation Wild Spirit Places Framework. We have the Cumulative Effects Assessment Process, and we have the Air Quality Management Plan. With, without exception, none of these are adequately supported today. We are struggling to maintain the Estuary Management Plan as it was envisioned. The Land and Resource Management Plan has not been implemented by the provincial government, and they are not really prepared to put more money into that. Uh, we have another example elsewhere is the Model Forest Framework. No money for it anymore. So I just put, put out the question or the issue that we already have an existing set of planning frameworks that are not being adequately maintained, and we should all bear this in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. And, and I think that's one of the intriguing pieces to this, is that it opens up some funding doors that may not do otherwise, help with moving some of the things that Eric talked about forward.
And for me personally, I mean, what I do in coordinating the forms is all volunteer, and that's not sustainable for the long run. So the future, I see this as a way to create that, that support network.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, at the meeting where this was presented at the House Sound Forum, I think, um, what I heard from the other municipalities that were there was this real sense of an ability to look at the region as a whole and deepen our sense of collaboration. Um, and as Eric said, not just among government, but with all stakeholders that have something in common with the sound. And so I think that was the sort of excitement that I felt, was that it was a more sustainable way to have a long-term plan for a region, rather than each of us trying to protect our little pieces of this wonderful place. And, um, and like you said, in a more sustainable way, it doesn't necessarily depend on volunteer efforts, although I recognize that moving this forward is going to require a lot of time and effort. So, um, like Ted, I think, you know, it's, uh, it's important to support this, this next step and invest in where we can take this. So I'd certainly like to put forward the motion then, we have in front of us.
But whereas UNESCO Biosphere Resources Tools, that one? Uh, do you want to read it though? Just a little from here. You want to give this one? Okay, yeah. I was just gonna read the last paragraph.
We're asked the UNESCO Biosphere because our effective tools are in, I think, United Nations conventions, including the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. Contribute to the conservation of landscapes, ecosystems, species, and genetic variation. Provide a development function to foster economic and human development, which is socioculturally and ecologically sustainable. And a logistics function to provide support for research, monitoring, education, and information exchange related to local, national, and global issues of conservation and development. We support the ongoing initiative to nominate House Sound as the UNESCO Biosphere Region.
And the motion doesn't include the first part, we just, yeah. I just didn't know, maybe we could read it out. Um, it moved by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Prior. Any more questions or comments? Yeah.
In passing this motion, though, is there, is there any process to determine what House Sound comprises? I mean, there's, I think, four examples up there of the boundaries. Um, is that going to be finalized at some point?
Hmm, probably, we need to have another meeting with the Squamish Nation. So far, our recommendation is to look at the entire watershed. So, uh, yeah, not really sure when we're gonna come to that decision yet, but probably, you know, when, I have a presentation to Canadian Commission, uh, at the end of March, so we'll ask for some recommendations as to, you know, how we get to that.
And it may be a conversation that we want to have here in Squamish, and like you said, maybe like option two, or option five, or four.
Right. So we are in the process of just creating a website specific to this initiative, which will start to put a lot of this information in one place. Right now, you can access a bit of the information through our Future of House Sound website, but this is a standalone issue.
Okay, I'll call the question, if you'd favor, code, which is in the next seat.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, um, I guess we'll send this back to you, and you can use it to convene whatever you need.
Thank you.
Just let us know, we can help you. Thanks, very much. Moving on the agenda, we hear this from the Arts Council, OCEAN Sound System Proposal. Um, I'm not sure how, how much time we necessarily want to do, this is money we put in the budget last year. I think there's a better proposal in front of us to actually get it going. Robert, can you speak to it briefly, or, I know Chris is here. What's that?
Maybe I'll go back.
Maybe I'll ask Christine. In last year's budget, how much was money we put away in? Was it for lighting and sound? Is it sound?
I think for portable lighting trust system for $10,000, and it's slotted to carry forward to 2017 budget.
Just lighting?
It was, that's what it was called in the...
Okay, okay. Robert?
In the strategic plan, Mayor Heinzmann, um, this was called, the item is engaged with the arts, arts community to determine needs and potential grant opportunities for hanging lights and speakers at the OCEAN Pavilion in Brendan Park. Staff went away and engaged with the Arts Council, uh, various, um, different boards of the Arts Council, because there's been a changeover. And early on, it was, um, determined that lights were not what the group wanted at the pavilion, that that wasn't what, um, was gonna meet the vision for, um, activating and, and making more dynamic down at the pavilion, Pavilion Park. Even though part of what council wanted was a, a portable lighting system that we might be able to utilize at offsite meetings. We've sourced lights, um, for offsite meetings, and really, the only place that we would need them is West Coast Rail, and we could accommodate that within our existing committee budget. So we sort of removed ourselves from that, um, requirement. But since then, the Arts Council's come back with suggestion on how to, um, utilize the, um, $10,000, and it's more within a sound system, um, as opposed to the lighting and A B portable. And Chris probably knows the technical details of that a little bit better, but do you have a vote rate?
It was $10,000, not $25,000?
No, it's 10. It's just the $10,000, and we've already taxed for it.
Last year.
The year before. We actually did it in 2015, and then carried it forward, and now we carry it forward again.
Now we get them.
Yep, well, now that we've got a plan in place.
Yeah.
So, yeah, actually, I wasn't entirely expecting to switch this, but, uh...
I didn't, I mean, I don't think it, I don't think we want to get into the need to be like this speaker, but I don't think, but we just want to have some confidence that it's moving forward.
It's getting done. Yep, and it will be done this year.
Okay.
Doug? Karen?
So is this just a matter of redesignating these funds to be not just lighting, but some lighting and sound as proposed?
Basically, the sound, the sound.
Yeah, removing the lighting requirement, because the other thing is, is if we were to include lighting, it's a lot more than $10,000.
So redesignating from lighting to sound.
Or whichever, yeah, there was counsel.
Well, Michael, please, you have a move, signed by Karen. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, my other question, uh, because I know in here it says sort of in the future we would look at lighting, so, um, because we haven't finished the budget yet, and we have a five-year plan, what are we, like, what is the scope if we want to?
I don't have that with me, I, at all. We, we sort of dropped that off.
Okay, so we haven't really investigated that.
If I could just speak quickly to that, so, you know, I, I, I think, um, we spoke mostly at House on Performing Arts about, you know, the need for lighting versus sound and so on, and they, the feedback we got from them was especially within this kind of budget, um, it was much more important to look at sound, so that's the direction we went. We also, you know, I think we're looking at this project in, in the context of keeping it very realistic and somewhat restricted the first year, proof of concept, uh, make sure we can build that volunteer base that can then take it a lot further in subsequent years.
Excellent. Thank you. I completely agree with this. If, if you're trying to stay within $10,000 budget, it's a sound system is a way more viable thing, but I look at that space and think, how was it possibly built without consideration of sound and lighting? You know, it's almost impossible to hang lights in that space, and having a sound system which is portable would fit that, but it's still, to hang a sound system as it would be the best use of the space is still really difficult because of the beams and everything, there's no real trust systems. So I'm wondering if we can look to the future of that space and make it, you know, it sits empty because of its unusability. It even sits empty in the summer because you can't really use it for performances because it's restricted at night. All the lights are very directional, we don't have any overhead lighting. So I just wonder if there could, you know, and this is definitely for future, it's a budget even, um, but if the Arts Council could reimagine, you know, maybe those beams get cut down to put trust on them, maybe there's some way that the Arts Center would find a better, more black box use. The arts, the arts should be the beauty in the space, not space. And I think that got overlooked with the architecture of that space. So maybe we can get input from the arts community, and maybe that's something for the, uh, for the arts.
Well, probably our community doesn't have the mandate to do that.
Right. Okay, so the, the Arts Council is like, what is, if they could make a better use of that space, what, if there could be a better use of that space, what could they imagine? Or how to get lights into that space, um, in a more practical way without having to buy portable lighting systems, which is what we have to do. And what every single user of that space who wants to use it at night has, and now we realize the expense of that, it's quite expensive every single time you want to launch a performance to have front lighting.
That could be best thought to maybe think about this year, and then consider something next year.
No, depending on... It's possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally supportive of this. I mean, if that's what you guys need to do, is to have a D A system that while needs over lights on there. I have two questions, though. Um, I looked at your budget here, I just wondered why there was a drum kit in it?
Um, so the, again, the idea is that, uh, in speaking to the Performing Arts Society especially, was that there are professional sound people that provide rent equipment and do sound for paid stuff, and so we had to be careful, wanted to be careful about competing with them and that sort of thing. So the thought is that this is really primarily targeted at just beginning starting musicians and growing that musician community as well. So it's, it's meant to be, um, free and accessible, this initial program, and the comment was, you know, especially for Quest students and so on that may want to participate, they may play the drums but not have a drum kit available. Or if you're a younger kid, maybe you can play the drums, but you don't have a driver's license yet or whatever. So if we have, you know, drum kits along those key things, if that's part of it, you know, we can set it up, and you have everything you need without needing to worry about all these other transportation things and so on. So it's really about, um, making this very, very accessible.
Okay. Uh, other thing, um, when you have the funds for this, I would encourage you to go to Able Auctions, one of them in, uh, Blackie there.
I've looked at some of them.
They had a huge sale out there from one of the biggest reinforcement companies in Canada that was selling mics, stands, cables, everything that you guys would actually be looking for.
Yeah, I register for that. It's painful not to buy everything.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the beauties of, um, nonprofit, like, the Arts Council doing this, is they can source things that we can't do, we're a little handcrafted in terms of how we source those. That's great. Um, so there's a motion on the floor, I will call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. So the goal is to get this going by summer kind of thing?
Uh, yeah, there's some details to work out with staff, I think, but, you know, we'd love to have an eight, nine concert series.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, Wood Fiber L G Environmental Assessment Amendment Comments. Jerry, is this yours or is this Chris?
Uh, yeah, with him, who I will go find.
We're a little ahead of schedule, why don't we take a three-minute break? We, um, we are on floor one, Wood Fiber L G Environmental Assessment Amendment Comments, Mr. Wickham.
Hello. Thank you. I am Chris Wickham, I'm the Director of Engineering with the district, and I am also our point contact for the working group with Provincial Environmental Approval's Office. And so it's fallen to me to collate the district's comments on the amendment to Wood Fiber L G's, uh, environmental certificate, and provide those tomorrow is the deadline. So, uh, we're here to have a quick backrounder, um, I know we're all, we're all pretty aware of what, what is going on at Wood Fiber as far as their amendment, but I just wanted to run through, uh, very quickly, um, a presentation, it's actually Wood Fiber's presentation, um, that they gave to the working group, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and so, uh, this isn't district information or whatever, this is the proponents' information about what their amendment is, and then have an opportunity for feedback from council on our proposed, uh, response. So, uh, in the council report, there are a couple of proposed comments, but I'd like to add to those and then have a motion to, uh, send those to the working group. So if I can just, uh, run very quickly through, um, we're all pretty aware of the Wood Fiber site, um, and why they chose that site. So it's, uh, um, a moderate-sized L G facility with a deep-water port. Um, and, uh, it will look something like this, so this is the actual L G plant here, um, on the south side of Mill Creek are all of the office buildings and, and non-petroleum facilities. And the port loading facility is actually right here, and then they're proposing, these are actually permanent dock floating storage units. Um, so this, this is, uh, and this, this layout was per the original application. Um, so a little bit of history, Squamish Nation approved their environmental assessment in, in 2015, October. Provincial was, was October 26th, 2015, and March 28th, or sorry, March 18th, 2016, they received their federal approval. Um, so all of, all of that, um, is in the past. This, the scope of this amendment, um, to their environmental certificate is, uh, three, just these three bullet points. The, the largest is the first, using air to cool the plant rather than seawater. This was actually a request of Squamish Nation, that they moved from their original seawater cooling to, uh, air cooling, um, for environmental reasons. The second two bullet points, um, are really during the construction phase only and not ongoing. Um, so, well, I shouldn't say that. The, sort of, the second bullet point, uh, to use an existing intake on Mill Creek. In their original environmental assessment, they were going to build a new intake, and they want the, uh, the potential, they haven't decided yet, but they want the potential to instead upgrade the existing intake. What that would mean was, would be during the upgrade of the existing intake on Mill Creek, they wouldn't have water, and so they would temporarily use, uh, water from Wood Fiber Creek, um, just during the construction phase of the intake. Um, that's a photograph of Mill Creek there in the, in the center. So I guess this is just a little bit of a background on, on Squamish Nation and, and the reason that Squam, that they are moving to the, moving the cooling technology to air cooling. and the reason that they are moving to the, moving the cooling technology to air cooling. So they voluntarily entered into a environmental certificate with Squamish Nation and signed a binding contract with them. And Squamish Nation selected the air cooling technology. And I think that was all of the, oh, sorry. So this is just, they looked at air, seawater, and air with freshwater. They went to a pure air cooling technology. And that basically looks like a big car radiator. It's mounted on the roof of the facility. And so it's, coolant runs through the finned tubes and there are big fans on top. Number of fans that would have to run depends on the outside air temperature, basically. So in the summer, there'd be more fans running than in the winter, day, night, and everything. And, sorry, just running through the bullet points here. Mentioned most of that except that they are electrically driven fans. They say that the energy consumption for air cooling is expected to be equivalent to or slightly less than the energy consumption for seawater cooling. And this is just a picture of another facility and what their air cooling looks like. It's this region right here. From a visual standpoint. And that is something that we've requested. This doesn't really tell us much about what it looks like. So that's where our comment number one came from. Please give us a 3D rendering of the visual impact. What is this thing going to look like at our site and not at this site in Indonesia? So the effects are anticipated, obviously, to reduce the marine impact because they will no longer be pulling seawater, chlorinating, treating, and then putting warm seawater into the sound. There's no additional footprint. There is some noise and potential for interaction between the fans and birds and bats in the area. Is there noise modeling results? This isn't just of the fans. This is the overall noise modeling with the inclusion of the fans. The dark area is, this dark blue area is basically negligible effect. So you can see with Squamish, it's actually hard to see. We're up here. We're well within the dark blue as far as the town site goes. And most of the noise is very isolated to the site. This line here is shipping noise of the sound. Just some more detailed at, in particular areas. And we're so far outside of that area, they don't even have us on the chart.
Can you go back up to the common sounds just to keep a...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So we're looking at, if we look at Britannia Beach, it's sort of nearby. The baseline sound level is 53 d B A. And the application case is 53.0. We can see a .1 d B A increase here from 43 to 43.1. If you look at what does 40, 40 d B A sound like? That's slightly over a library, is what they're saying. I assume that that's...
Kind of library.
Yeah. I don't know if that includes the children's play area in the library or not. But essentially, it's a very nominal background noise and very similar to the noise that is already there. It's a very small percentage increase. And the impact to the town of Squamish would be less. The freshwater use, now the freshwater use is already part of the E A. It's just where exactly it's coming from. So it's during, during the project, construction and operation. Obviously, they have water and heat. And you can see that it's actually much more in construction where they're using it for dust control, concrete, some worker facilities and everything. The typical is a tenth of that during operations. The intake locations are on, are these yellow docks here. So this is the existing Mill Creek and the proposed Mill Creek. And so this is where, right now, their E A allows them to use this intake. And they're possibly going to upgrade this intake farther out creek. The wood fiber intake is here and they have a flue that comes down. Now, wood fiber actually comes down right onto the edge of site. And in their E A, they are looking at either using the existing intake or using submersible pumps, screened pumps closer to their site.
Can you just go back up?
Yeah.
What's the sort of difference in the volume between Mill Creek and Wood Fiber Creek? Is Mill Creek much bigger than Wood Fiber Creek?
It is larger. Did they have, I didn't see that in this. It is larger. They're both substantial creeks. Mill Creek's probably twice the size. Just as a general guess, based on our site visit, standing next to both of them. So that says basically what I just said. This is, this is Mill Creek here, running through the industrial site. You can see it's basically just walled off on either side and runs through the industrial site. So there we have our mean flow from Mill Creek.
400 liters per second.
Yeah, it's substantial. That's a mean annual flow. And that's 3,400 liters per second. They're looking at taking 70. Sorry, 70, you're right. So the inflow release is, would be through Flynn Row. They haven't said what the inflow release would be, the upstream flow release. And that's basically, they must always maintain a certain flow in the creek. And if they have to reduce their intake, then that's unlikely to be an issue in this case because of the large flow of the creek. And so, sorry, and I think that's really all that I wanted to run through.
Just back up one slide there. It says, be applying for a short term. So the short term during construction.
During construction.
So after construction, they'll be using a lot less than seven liters.
Right. Yeah, they're using a tenth, a tenth after construction. That's right.
Thank you. The coolant is using recycled coolant? It's not? What happens to the coolant that's used in...
Yeah, my understanding is it's closed.
It's closed.
Just like in a car. It's probably glycol based, in fact.
The intakes that you showed there on Mill Creek and the Wood Fiber Creek, have they done a study, if you refresh my memory here, but have they done a study as far as spawning grounds in relation to those intakes?
Yeah, that was for the Mill Creek, yes. That was part of the original E A. For the wood fiber, this is Wood Fiber Creek intake effects. They're planning on using screens basically to mitigate. I don't know any more details past that.
Not sure. And I do want to open it up to the public to see if there's any questions or comments. A quick question, I'll go back to council chair. The whole application is predicated on a 25-year license agreement with N E B, correct?
Yes.
Although they've asked...
Or they've asked to increase to 40 years, you're right.
They've asked to increase to 40 years. But the current E A process went through under the assumption it was a 25-year. And it was evaluated on a premise, I suppose. A quick question is, do we have any indication of the effect of extending the agreement to 40 years on the environmental assessment process, if any?
It's not something that's been brought up to the working group. There is no, that's not part of their E A amendment. I think that the assumption essentially is that there's a construction phase and an operations phase. And during the operations phase, you mitigate everything. And then it's, it's not, there is no timeline, essentially, from an environmental standpoint. That it's sort of on an annual basis, you have whatever impact you have. I don't, I don't think that the time horizon is really part of the evaluation. But that's, I'm not clear on that point.
That was my assumption. I was just wondering if there's any, been any conversation at the working group on that?
There hasn't been.
Yeah, well, I mean, I see lots of questions coming. But, you know, the concern to me is with the change going over is air quality and, you know, noise. But I see lots of questions coming. So the working group will be asking all those questions.
They will be if we ask them to.
It's Chris.
Well, aren't our guys on the working group?
No.
I am the district representative to the working group.
No, that was a staff committee. And it hasn't been meeting for a year.
Well, that's what I was just assuming.
No, this is the provincial E A offices working group.
We listen to all the questions that are coming in. Can add some, I will.
Okay.
A question about your suggestion that we request a proper schematic 3D, whatever. Are they going to provide that so we can comment on it? Are they going to provide that during the E A comment period so we can actually comment on the data?
That's an excellent question. It would be my assumption that we would get, the working group would put in our comments and then we'd get responses back. I don't know what the timeline is for that back and forth.
It'd all fall good if you had a picture after the fact.
Yeah. Yep.
We kind of need a picture that we'd be able to coalesce comments either way rather than simply our comment is really pictured, but it will have no say in once the comment period closes. I do want to open it up to the public if there's anyone who wants to ask a question. Yeah, come on up. Just put your hand up if you would.
So I'm Chris Pedengel. I don't know if everyone got a chance to read my, the letter or email I sent yesterday evening fairly late. But, you know, I found that in the assessment, it's somewhat problematic because it has very striking contradictions to past claims Wood Fiber has made in this chamber on the public record. The, my recollection was that the air cooling was not just a request of Squamish Nation, but it was a request of our community as well. And we've been fighting Wood Fiber for three or so years at least on that issue. And I think that's important because in the, it's actually mentioned many times, but in particular, there's a document on the district website submitted by Wood Fiber, a presentation just like this one, where they said that it was important to use water cooling because it's, quote, "more energy efficient than air cooling" and, quote, "produces less environmental noise than air cooling." And now what we're seeing is that there's no G H G impacts, no labor impacts, no social impacts, economic impacts that are significant. And that's really problematic because we now have an E drive subsidy, which effectively, based on the power numbers Wood Fiber has submitted, is a B C Hydro subsidy for $43,500,000 per year from B C Hydro. And so a small change in power consumption makes a big change in terms of economic impacts. And so, you know, for Wood Fiber to say before, the air cooling, the water cooling is much more energy efficient. And now they're saying, oh, no, it's just the same thing because there's no change in all these impacts related to the power consumption. Therefore, the power consumption has to be the same. So there's a big contradiction there. Before, they said there is a lot less environmental noise. And this was a key reason to fight our community for three years on the air cooling versus sea cooling. And now when you read the proposal, they do acknowledge there are some noise impacts, but they effectively come to the conclusion they're insignificant. They don't really have to mitigate against it. So, you know, what they're saying now is very contrary to things they've said here in the past. So I've asked for a number of things, requests that I would like the district to make to a working group. I suggested to, just, Wood Fiber has also said in the same document I was referring to that Wood Fiber will not receive a preferred or subsidized rate on electricity from B C Hydro. And as we now know, they're getting a massive annual subsidy. And they also said, policy forbids any incremental costs be borne or subsidized by existing rate pairs. And B C Hydro rate pairs are going to be paying for this massive subsidy. So, you know, the, we can't unfortunately trust the claims they make in these presentations. So, you know, in the amendment, they make claims about there's no social economic impacts. There's no G H G impacts, and that's it. There's no analysis to support any of these new claims. And so essentially, I'm asking the district through the working group to ask for ideally an independent verification of some of these claims, considering, you know, the history here. And, you know, this isn't just my word against theirs. This is their own word against themselves and why I think we need to dig further.
Thank you very much. You know, I think your comments are well taken. I think we would like to really understand the power difference, the G H G difference. Are these questions that the working group has been grappling with or have been bringing up with the proponents or have...
At this point, we have had a kickoff meeting to the working group. And then we are all gone off to our various constituents and councils and whatnot to gather comments. So there has been no robust conversation amongst the members. So I agree, we can definitely add that to, especially the G H G impact to the comments.
So if we could add Chris's questions to the conditions and second on working groups, if that's what you...
So you're proposing the entire letter, which I have read, was very excellent. Well-written, thank you. The entire letter, including aspects around employment and capital costs and that sort of thing? Would you like that to be added as well?
Yeah.
Or do we want to concentrate on the G H G and...
The challenge is, is that it's only opened up to the cooling system. So the questions have to be relevant somehow to the change in the cooling system. That's the parameter that the E A offices has. So, yes, and interestingly enough, we've really never gotten a comprehensive socioeconomic analysis period of the whole thing, which was, I think, I think it's one of the conditions anyway. But so, we're relevant to the amendment? Yes, I would suggest. I've got Karen, Doug, Ed, and then Rick. Come on up.
So I agree with Chris. I think we have to understand as a council, how they justify one cooling system in the initial application and put the other ones down. And now suddenly, this one has no problems. And everything's hunky-dory. So I think we need to point out on the working group that there is, you know, a contradiction there. I certainly like an answer. The, I'll go back to Patty's comment about can we get the picture and can we comment on it? The timeline for commenting is very short. And this has happened before through the E A office where they barely allow a comment period where we can have two regular scheduled council meetings and be able to review documents that come back. So I think the cutoff date is like March 9th.
For the public?
Public. When is our cutoff?
Tomorrow.
I take my point.
Third letter commenting on that.
Yeah, so anyway, there's, we need to, because it's just ridiculous that we can't get feedback back from the working group about our concerns and have a discussion about them yet. It doesn't build faith in the process at all. On the issue of sound, and we've seen this before, right? Here's our estimates. We'll model them after the plans build and we hope that the two match. But I would like us to look at our tourism... But I would like us to look at our tourism values in the area, because we've got kites out on the water, and we have pleasure boats that come in and out of our sound. And so I would actually like us to set a limit for the sound that can be heard if you're using a fortuita, if you're approaching of the sound with a sailboat or a motorboat because you want to come and visit Squamish. I think that we should set a limit, not just so to go, yeah, it's probably just a whisper, and we'll model that in the future, but say, the sound cannot be louder than 30 decibels in the major navigation channel for pleasure boats. Because that's what will stop people from coming up here, like, oh, we'll go as far as the tiny beach, but once you go past that plant, it's so noisy, we don't want to go any further. You know, we've got iconic kite surfing out, and, and we don't want kite surfers out there going, ah, used to love this place, but now it's really noisy. So, so rather than accept their modeling, I think we should set, like, we don't want it louder than this, because that affects our tourism. So, I don't know what the council feels that limit should be, but I certainly think it, you know, there needs to be a limit, it definitely impacts how people use the water if it's loud. And, and I'm not talking right next to them, but where people are using to come and go from, from Squamish.
If I could pull up, Chris, within the certificate conditions, could they not say a condition is you not exceed these decibels in these areas?
I believe they could, yeah. I think that's a great idea. I, I think it might be helpful if we suggest an area and a decibel limit, and we can do that, I mean, we can, you know, half nautical mile offshore of the plant, we can choose a decibel level from the handy chart here, and I'm helping, or I'm happy rather to come up with those offline if we want to do a general guideline in here, and I can put numbers to it, or we can discuss numbers.
I, I kind of feel like if I'm out on the sound, I don't mind hearing wind, but I shouldn't hear anything mechanical. That's kind of my feeling. That's not why I'm out on the water. So, it's somewhere below 30 for me, but.
So, so I think this chart here on the right, through the chair, if we look at perhaps, perhaps an automobile on the highway 30 meters away might sound kind of loud, a normal conversation at one meter, 60 decibels, quiet living room 40. Did this council have a recommendation?
Well, let's, let's think about it, we'll come back with Anthony just on the mail.
My other question in their application is they provide a whole long list of people they invited, but it doesn't say who actually came or who they actually consulted. So there's a whole list on page 19 of their application. Anybody can say that they sent letters to all these groups, but I'm actually curious about who commented and who actually went to the site, and I think that's useful feedback to get from them on who attended from our community, certainly some of our community groups are listed there. Oh, I was at a meeting on Saturday where the MLA was present, and he was asked the question, given that the EA is open, is this our chance to comment on, can we make other changes? He provided a bit of a vague answer, but suggested we might be able to comment on more than what's just, did you read that?
Everything I've heard is, the Environmental Assessment Office, funny, is, it's on the water, sea water cooling system versus the air cooling system, period. Now, whether there's other things that somehow ripple away from that or ripple back from that, I, I think they're probably fair game, but anything I've heard is, is very narrow. I don't remember doing the same at the meeting, but I might have missed it. Doug, do you think?
Yeah, thanks. So, keeping in mind that this is a fairly narrow reopening into Chris's point, you know, I can understand questions around the GHGs, the comparative GHGs, that's certainly part of the environmental assessment. That's new information as far as hydro subsidies go, and I'm not sure that that's an environmental issue. Maybe an issue, but I'm not.
It's a socioeconomic issue, which is part of the environmental assessment.
Okay. Anyway, you can ask the question, certainly, I think everybody would like to know if that's in fact the case. So, the other thing is with respect to sound, and being somebody that's up there with a boat on the sound often, I have to be careful how low we make that, otherwise I couldn't take my boat out there, because I think, you know, it has to be realistic, and it has to be close to reality. The windsurfing actually happens within a kilometer of shore, from my observation, it doesn't go farther than the sound. I have measured it from the closest point of the Wood Fiber site to the, or the south point of the land, the oceanfront, it's seven kilometers. So, I guess it's possible you would have some noise. I can tell you when you're out there and windsurfing in 20 knots of wind, that's noisy enough by itself, there's no question around it. You can barely carry on a conversation sometimes when you're out there in the water, and that's me without the engine on, just on the windsurfing. So, you could try and set some limits, but I think you'd have to be realistic about that. Given the fact that there's a major highway that goes up one side, this may not be the noisiest thing in How Sound by a long shot. So I think we have to be realistic about setting limits, and 30 decibels is practically just still air, and to suggest that that's the limit is, is probably pushing reality frantically. So, we could try to set something like that, and find it, but really, and you look at the yellow that goes down to the freighters, I mean, I don't know if anybody's been out there in the sound when a deep sea ship has gone by, you don't really hear the noise. You can get slight PC bearing going by, that doesn't really upset anyone. So, anyway, I just, you know, if you want to do that, that's fine, but I think you really do have to focus on, on what else is going on in the sound.
Just a question back to you, Doug. I mean, a boat going by, it goes by, it's gone by, a minute or two, it's gone. I mean, this is something that's there all the time, just going, 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 going. So it, it's a bit different than a boat going by, that might go up to 80 decibels when it goes by, but it's 30 seconds, and then it's gone, whereas this is constant.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay.
But if you're standing down on the oceanfront, like, for a few hours, one windy afternoon, there's a lot of ambient noise there.
Ted, Ruth, Peter?
Yeah, I was just, Doug kind of asked my question, and I feel, you know, sound, I think it kind of looks okay, but Karen wants to push forward on that, I'm okay. But the subsidies is, you know, that was certainly an high-brow razor when I read that, and it would be nice for everybody to know there's some subsidies. And I think that's fair, for $43 million a month?
A year.
A year. Okay.
A year. Pretty nice subsidy. Ruth, come on up.
Thanks for having me. I have five points that I think might be relevant before you consider. First of all, I just think as point of interest or note that the Squamish Nation are putting this change through their environmental assessment process as well. So it sort of reads that this is the acceptable solution, but there's still a process that they are going through. And also that this process, the change was as a result of information that resulted in unacceptable level of harmed fish. So this isn't a change, this is actually a change due to harmed fish, which has been able to be changed because of the Squamish Nation's environmental assessment. The visual impacts, you're asking for 3D, which is a good idea, but I noticed that that slide that's still being used of the site is missing the visual effects of the hydro lines. When we went to the public meeting that BC Hydro put on about this project, it was shocking, the actual swath of trees that were cut.
We did ask for that cumulative visual, we haven't seen it yet.
Right, yeah. And I was on the working group committee and actually brought this up at that time, and it was quite well taken, but the public has never had the opportunity, except for that one meeting, to actually see what that visual effects would be. If there's changes now, decisions are being made on hydro, and maybe that's changed, fine, but that should, I would suggest that total picture be part of that. When it comes to noise, I have yet to go through this in detail, but the term poll review right now, Transport Canada is doing a review of the project, and it will be on that recommendation that it will be likely determined exactly how many tugs would escort an LNG carrier. Now, best practices are being looked at internationally, and it could be anywhere from two to four tugs. And I am not sure whether that noise is including the noise from the tugs. I have been told that actually tugs are extremely noisy, and so that would just be something to check. There's also tugs to be on standby, there are different kinds of tugs that actually move the carrier into place, so just to see if that's covered off. In regards to cumulative impacts, I would be also asking for an updated effects because since the original EA, there were projects such as other run-of-the-river projects up the valley that may have progressed, and there may be more information. For example, Burnco Gravel Mine, which is around the corner, McNabb Creek, a run-of-the-river project is now in operation, and the noise from that project is far greater than the anticipated expected noise. The company is working on it, but it is a different reality from what was expected. So I would just suggest that, you know, an update on cumulative effects, the noise from this project plus anticipated noise, should those other run-of-the-river projects come on upstream.
That brings up an interesting point. I don't know, the visual that we're looking at on the screen there is, is that just the sound of the cooling system, or is that the sound of a ship in dock, you have a generator and a cooling system? Like, do you have an understanding of exactly, is that a cumulative analysis?
Yes, this is cumulative, but I don't know if it's cumulative, including other, other projects. I believe it's just Wood Fiber.
So this is the loudest, the whole site would be with everything working at the same time?
And that's, and that's why you see this corridor of the, of the sound, that's, that's sort of a linear ship, if you will. As a ship moves along, obviously, it's a sort of spherical sound signature, and this is the worst case, as the ship's moved all the way along there, what the sound everybody's heard is, is it going up there?
And sound generally goes up, so it's interesting that there's no graduation up the hill in this analysis either.
Yeah, just as a point of interest on the environmental assessment for the gravel mine project, the noise is a very, they have yet to comment back on a lot of the comments people have made around noise modeling.
Maybe if I go, the circuit air conditioning just went off for some reason, maybe not necessary. Do you have that?
Two things, I agree with the, because this is strictly for the EA's cooling system comments confined to that, I think that the hydro question about the subsidy should come into play, because it is being powered for that cooling system by hydro, so I think that would be good to know. Secondly, I agree with, on a noise cap, or a decibel cap, to say that 60 dB is the aggregate noise from everything going on at that site at one time, including the fans and whatever work might be occurring, is, I don't know, I have a hard time swallowing that, 60's not very loud. I think 30 is a bit unrealistic, because that's, like, the fan just turned off, but I imagine with that fan on, or probably if we were all silent, it would be, you know, 45 decibels. But to say that at 60 with everything running is pretty optimistic. So I think that maybe, you know, asking to see if we can put a cap on it at 60, and I don't have a distance away from that, but obviously the noise contour would change as you approach and as you go away, and also would probably depend on a bit of wind direction. But it might be, it would be us to put that in place now, given what you were saying about Burnco and the changes that have happened there. So, throw that out there.
Yeah, certainly if we did 60, that looks like, it, it at least brings you to pretty much everything that's on the water. I think that's reasonable. It just seems like mostly on the land it gets about 60. Am I reading that right?
Yes, that's, that's how every, the, the yellow is 60 to 65, which is a little bit offshore there.
Yellow's 50 to 55, is it not? Am I reading that wrong? And then the orange is 65 to 60, and the pink is 60 to 65?
Your eyes are better than mine.
Yes.
Yeah, no, you're right.
Yeah, keep going, I've got Karen.
Can I just come back to your question about process, and when we get to hear responses and 3D modeling and whatnot? I, I found the slide from the EAO here with the timeline, and I can just, I don't have an easy way to project it, but if I just read out. So, our comments are due by tomorrow. Wood Fiber LNG will finalize their responses to the comments during the month of March. EAO will review those responses and do focused issue resolution during March or April, and during April, the EAO sends draft amendment referral package back to the working group for three-week review. So at that point, we'll be able to see where they came to on the, in, in April.
So hypothetically, if we ask for proper visuals to understand this from visual context, we'll have an ability to comment in that period of time on that?
Right. I, I assume there's a filter there, and the EAO will work back and forth on what exactly that looks like, and then we'll be able to provide our comments on whether we're happy with the results or not happy with the results during that period.
Karen, it's Doug. Yeah, so I just want to clarify my earlier comments about sound. So right now, their modeling shows that when it hits the shore and our foreshore and where people are kite surfing and paddle boarding, it says it will be less than 30 decibels. And so rather than saying, let's hope your modeling works, I think we should say, the sound from your site cannot exceed 30 decibels within a kilometer of Squamish. And if you come out the sound, this picture's really bad because it's hard to see the land contours, but I see where the tanker ships are going to go, that's fine, that's passing noise, but where pleasure boats are coming past the headland from Watts Point, is that one of the point?
Yep.
That sound stands quite far out, and so, you know, if they're saying it's going to be 50 to 55, sort of mid-channel off of Watts Point, then that should be the limit. So rather than saying we're targeting this, it's like no more than, or maybe it's less than, I don't know, but you see what I mean? So rather than just saying, we'll see if our modeling works, and saying, you've said it will be this high, and we don't want it to be higher than that. That's what I'm trying to say, is not to put anything unrealistic there, it's just that we won't have anything to hold them accountable to, except we'll try and make it better. But I think the EA should say it can't be worse than 50 to 55 decibels at mid-channel off between Wood Fiber and Watts Point, so that people coming up the sound in their sailboats or motorboats aren't overpowered by the sound, because it is louder than people thought it would be. Then they have to keep working to bring it down, and bring it down, and bring it down to a level. I'm not so concerned about the noise closer to Squamish, because their modeling shows it really should be that, so let's make that the limit, just in case it's not. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to be unrealistic.
Doug, come on up.
It's just a point of clarification.
No, you have to, sorry, microphones, else we will start jumping up and down. We'll help, we'll.
Thank you. So, just a clarification, is the suggestion to limit the sound or the noise for just one industry in How Sound, or is this for all industrial users of How Sound?
This is specific to this project.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want onto?
Yeah.
This is just, they're saying this is what it's going to be, and we're trying to say, okay, if this is what you say it's going to be, this is what we expect it to be in the future, that's what we're trying to get. Thanks, Eric. Yeah, Chris?
Just two quick, a couple quick comments. Wind will really carry sound, and we know certain times of the day the wind really blows in, so I didn't notice good sound modeling interactions in their analysis, so that might be something for us to look at. The point that I don't know in BC that there's frequency-specific modeling, and there's a real big difference between a shrill narrow-band frequency that's all the time versus a broad-band white noise like the wind. And so we may want to have some consideration and some questions about what frequencies are we talking about, and different frequencies travel different distances as well. And different frequencies travel different distances as well. So, you know, I didn't see any of that analysis, and I think that would be good to understand and important to comment on. Just one final thing, we've had more snow than we've ever had since I've lived here. I don't, it's not clear to me what happens if you get that much snow and ice on these fans. Do they shut down? Do they dunk antifreeze all over these? Do they go out with flamethrowers and melt it off? Like, what, what happens? And I think that's kind of important to understand in terms of when this plant's operating. And, you know, it'd be something I'm very curious about.
It'll help cool things down.
Chris, you want to speak for frequencies?
Please, I'll speak on the last two points. Well, on the first point, good point. I'll add that to the wind, question about the wind to our comments. The, I did ask during our working group meeting, I did ask about frequencies and did clarify that it is DBA, so it is audible. And what that means is that it's essentially a spectrum that's weighted towards the higher frequencies. So a very, or sorry, a less loud high frequency gives you a higher DBA score than a louder low frequency, if that makes sense. It's actually modeled to the human ear. So when you see, when you see DBA, it's modeled, the sound modelers are modeling to the impact of the human ear.
So gears and moves begin?
Exactly.
But I guess human ear sensitivity, I understand that differs throughout the frequency spectrum, but that's distinct from the annoyance level of the frequency?
I, my understanding is that's exactly how DBA is supposed to work, is how annoying is it? How, how, well...
How annoying is it to humans?
Yes, exactly. So I guess we can go, we'll both hit Wikipedia after, after the meeting here and bone up on this, but my understanding of the noise modeling is...
It gives me great hump as though staff are going to Wikipedia.
No, my understanding of this is that through the DBA modeling, it should take that into account. On the last point, on snow and ice and that sort of thing, I think essentially that should be a plant safety consideration. I mean, that's a basic engineering consideration. And it wouldn't really come into the EA if their cooling system shuts down. The whole plant's going to shut down, and they're going to lose a lot of money. It won't, it wouldn't all of a sudden start puking glycol onto the ground or whatever. Also, I think that would be very unlikely since that's, this is the hot point. And it's blowing hot air upwards. So it would be a pretty extreme event to ice it over. But I think that's more in the realm of an engineering safety review than an environmental review.
Okay, so lots of good comments, really appreciate the feedback from the public too. Really valuable. I didn't hear anyone from council say they didn't want something included in our comments. Everyone's okay with what's been said, and Chris putting those comments forward to the environmental assessment office. Okay, so there is a motion that the district's commerce admit the comments, I would all suggest contain in the report and the comments expressed in the committee meeting dated February 21st to the Wood Fiber LNG and Environmental Assessment Amendment Working Group. We'll move her for that. I'll call you Councilor Elliott, second of the Councilor Prior. Councilor Prior, you have a question?
Well, just once you compile a list, it'd be nice to see the list.
Thanks, I'm just interested in the hydro rate thing. Chris, is it specific to wood fiber? Is it just an industry rate?
It's any LNG facility agreeing to use electrical power. It applies for this new subsidy. It was announced in December out of the wood fiber site. And when Christie Clark came, that was announced.
It doesn't seem to be a specific rate. And is it different than other industrial users as a special? Or are they just including wood fiber? Do we know that for fact?
The original, yeah, the original LNG facilities were all to be charged the sort of base rate of $83 per megawatt hour, which is basically what all of our rates are based on. Industry gets a special discounted rate of $54 per megawatt hour, and LNG was not going to get that. The eDrive program was to give LNG facilities that special rate.
The industry rate?
Yes, and so it is...
So it's not a specialized LNG rate, it's actually an industry rate that the LNG facilities are being included in. So they're not being selectively, it's not selective to one industry. It's all industry rates, and BC is just including them. So it's not the actual LNG subsidy.
But it does take places like wood fiber into in that financial loss for BC and the whole sum of their subsidies. So it's a concern.
Yeah, and not, I mean, we can get into a whole discussion about industry rate and whether they care or not, and not every industry qualifies, et cetera, et cetera.
Is it worth me just summarizing very quickly? And I mean, we can wordsmith, I'll wordsmith after the fact, but... So I have a point on GHG impact and subsidies as a socioeconomic impact. And then I just made a note of Chris's letter where it's, the points are relevant to this amendment from that letter. We want a hard limit on sound instead of just, we think it's going to be this, and...
Or maybe if this is what we're saying is going to happen, we are saying that this is a limit, not just...
Right, we'll accept this, but you have to work on it to get it down to this, if it's not what you expect. Absolutely, I think that's a great point. The visual, we wanted to just amend our comment here to the staff comment to include the visual impact of hydraulics.
And the portage pipeline, and we want the whole picture. And we have asked this in our previous comments, so we can move.
Okay. On the noise, we wanted to make sure that tugs are included in the noise. And cumulative effects, including other, an update on other projects in the area, especially upstream run-of-the-river projects, and the effect of wind on the sound modeling. Does that sound relatively comprehensive?
Yeah, no, some other things, I think, because there's a letter talking about some of the socioeconomic effects as well.
Yes, yeah, I kind of love that under Chris's letter.
Okay, oh.
And frequency as well. What if they assume that the constant frequency of the fans may be?
Okay.
Oh, that is well.
All right, so in motion for, I will call a question, all those in favor, pose. Chris, thank you, everybody.
We are in the community hall meeting for February 21st, and we're on item 14 Downtown Truck Route Study.
Okay, so good afternoon. My name is Laura Fritzek, municipal engineer here at the District of Squamish. And I have with me Jason Walker, who's a transportation engineer, project manager at Urban Systems. And we're here to show you, I guess, a snapshot of what's in the draft Downtown Truck Route Study that we've been working on since, I guess, last spring now. And show you the general process, the recommendations, and what's going forward from this. So today's objective is review the study process, share the rationale and recommended options, invite some discussion, and then hopefully receive approval to finalize the report. So in phase one, we did, a number of different things happened somewhat simultaneously. We were doing background reviews, had a public engagement event, did a survey, and then did some data gathering. So there was a, what happened was that we sort of had some initial options to float with the public. We went out to see if anybody had any more suggestions, and then we incorporated what we could and got some initial opinions. And then we decided what kind of data we were going to collect to find out more about what our situation, present situation is in Squamish. Phase two, we do scenario development, the development of the evaluation criteria, options evaluation. And then again, we went back to the public and our stakeholders and did, got their feedback, went back and tweaked a few things here and there based on that. And now we're at phase three, where we're presenting our recommendations and hoping to finalize the report soon. So the options, hopefully this is not unfamiliar by now. In simplest terms, I apologize for the graphic not being a bit more detailed, but like I said, I'm assuming we've sort of seen this before. So option, what we're more or less calling option one is the Lagers Lane option, which is more or less business as usual, but with preferably some improvements to the intersections and areas that could make it better for truck traffic. The option two is Third Avenue, as you can see in the red, which has the same entrance at Cleveland Avenue, but then trucks find their way to Third. How exactly they would do that, also a little bit unclear at this point. But the main point is that it is go down to Third Avenue towards the terminals or to other locations such as Oceanfront for construction vehicles. Option three is the Seventh Avenue, which is a light green, but it's basically the one furthest to the west that comes through what we often refer to as the estuary area and bypasses downtown, but still relies on the Cleveland Highway connection to get there. Or has to come from the north part of town and along the Bailey Street or the unpaved road that gets you to the rail yards. The, and then there's three different blind channel crossing options that we looked at. The furthest to the north in purple is the Pemberton Crossing. So that's a low bridge that would basically twin the rail bridge that's there. And then the access comes off of Clark Drive and goes above, it's rail separated from the rail crossing, which would provide a second access off of the highway, but still relies on Lagers Lane to go through downtown. Then the second crossing option is looking at Main Street. So again, comes off Clark Drive and then comes across the blind channel and makes its way into downtown. And then finally, what we're calling the Westminster Crossing, which also comes off Clark, the highway, and then crosses over to the southmost part of downtown. So, oh, this presentation's a little out of date. We'll run with it. The main thing is that we are showing in this is we did, we did some traffic counting and had a look at how many trucks were coming in and out of the downtown. And what we basically discovered was that on a typical day, we have around six trucks per hour coming down Lagers Lane, which ends up being a truck every 10 minutes. But in both directions, that's a truck every five minutes, if you include north and southbound. So that just gives us an idea of how much traffic there is that's truck. And then on top of that, as we mentioned in the report, you may have seen, and we've mentioned before, we're finding that the amount of truck volume is, on Lagers Lane, is like 2% to 4% of the traffic, of the overall traffic. So that's actually less than a typical truck group is. So it's not, it's not a lot of trucks, I think is the main point we're getting at. Anything you wanted to add about that?
Can we get, maybe an understanding, you say it's not a lot of trucks relative to a truck route in a big city or something. What would be a lot of trucks for a, like this?
So getting more into the 7% to 10% range, like that would be more typical for a truck route. Is that a safe, yeah? So that's...
And in that instance, it may be on much higher volume streets as well. Obviously, the overall volume that we see on some of these streets like Lagers Lane is quite low. So the percentage is on Lagers, as an example, is 4% to 7%. But obviously, the overall relative number of trucks is actually quite low. Streets like, like obviously very major streets like in McQuarre, like Ninth Street, you see like 10,000 trucks a day, whereas we see 50 to 100.
And then, yeah, go ahead.
Well, just on this, you know, the Oceanfront's starting to gear up now. There's just trucks going in there steady. So, I mean, and I know you've got a future, like you've got some data looking into the future, but I think the future is now. And so there's just, right now, there's all the material down there. It's pretty steady all day, so... I know you'll talk, yeah, you'll talk to that later.
Yes.
Okay, now, can I just continue?
Like I said, I'm not going to go into this in any detail because we've moved on since then. So this gives you the results of our analysis, and something's changed from what you've seen in the report, if you read it in detail. So we, at this time, we're recommending for the short-term option to maintain the Lagers Lane truck route such as it is, possibly with some minor improvements, but that would have to be incorporated as part of our capital works projects. The medium to long-term option is the Pemberton Crossing. And so I'm sure most everyone is familiar with, that's that twin, the basically twinning of the rail bridge. And we do, I mean, we've talked about that based on other projects. That's been a recommendation in the past as something to do, not in relation to trucks, but actually just in relation to traffic in Squamish as providing a secondary access from the highway and a rail-separated access is the second piece that I guess is really important. The longer-term option that we're recommending at this time is the Westminster Crossing. So we do see an ultimate need, especially once we have, we see closer to build out or at least well into adding so much density to downtown that we're simply going to need a second way to get from the highway to downtown that alleviates the pressure on downtown itself on those through routes that go through town. So now, initially, we had said, we had left Seventh Avenue on the table, and I'll explain the reason why. It's because in the past, Seventh Avenue has been very much linked to the Dyke project, the potential Dyke project along that alignment. Now, we've since had a lot of discussion about that and the realization that each of these projects was relying on the other project to kick it off. And that's not how it's rolling. We haven't seen a bucket of money come in for either one. And we sort of, wait a minute, we keep saying, sort of keep pointing to each other, but it's not going anywhere. So we're like, we know we don't have the funding for building that Dyke project along the Seventh Alignment, so we're looking at the Sixth Avenue or the Town Dyke Alignment. And because for many other reasons, the Seventh Avenue connector doesn't, it doesn't achieve that rail separation. In fact, it introduces two new rail crossings, and it doesn't provide a secondary access off of the highway. So those are the main things that... Does anybody have any questions specifically about this or how we're doing this?
So if I can maybe paraphrase that a little bit, you said that you'd still need option A or C, even if you did do option B, you said that you'd still need that secondary access anyway? Is that sort of...
That's the idea, is that we, our sense is two things. Both of the, of the recommended blind channel crossings provide traffic relief. And we know, as we decipide downtown, as much as we'd like to all think that we're only riding our bikes everywhere, we're attracting so many commuters, and there's definitely going to be a lot of people needing to get to the highway from downtown. So that's what's driving that. Whereas the Seventh Avenue, you might solve your truck problem. You're not solving any of your traffic problem because we're not going to be sending people over more rail tracks to bypass somehow downtown to get them to the end of downtown. It just doesn't solve enough of the problems.
I think this is a good place to maybe stop and ask some questions. So, Councilor Prior and Councilor Fraser.
When I was on the SODC board years ago, we looked at the bridge coming across. And in order to get all the trucks up and down Lagers Lane, or from Lagers Lane to the Oceanfront, it put the Westminster Crossing landing at Third Avenue. You're aware of that, too?
At Third Avenue.
Well, when you come across, you know, for one, you have to go across on First Nations Land, too, which they weren't really happy about. But then when you're coming across the map of the blind channel, I mean, you're up so high there because of map of the water and to get across, that when you come across on the other side, you're actually landing at Third Avenue. All bridges coming across were landing at Third Avenue, which meant coming down Lagers Lane, it's tight getting under it. So you have to get under a bridge coming down Lagers Lane. And just as long as you're aware of all that, I mean, we should be, are.
Definitely. And I mean, something to keep in mind as well, because I think we tend to see that bridge option. Well, for one thing, it's not an immediate option. This is definitely not something we're going to build in the next 10 years. The second thing is that... The second thing is that, now imagine our downtown with six-story buildings everywhere, which is the direction that we're, not everywhere, but in a lot of areas, which is the direction we're heading in. And I think the impact of that bridge changes when the scale of downtown is suddenly up here versus where it is now, and, you know, so it is, it's a changing landscape for many reasons.
Just one more question on that, and that's what I, the Seventh Avenue connector, besides the environmental stuff, it never shows where it ends, like on the map, when you show the Seventh Avenue connector, it stops, and it doesn't actually show where it's proposed to get out to the highway, which was always a big question for me, it's like, what is it going down to, all the new residential or government road, or is it going through the industrial park? I mean, there's really no end to it. I've never seen where it comes out.
Yeah, thank you, and I'm glad you changed your recommendation of the Seventh Avenue connector. I mean, I argued about, you know, right-of-way should be there because of the sand and so forth over the years, but the more you look at it, the more, quite apart from the environmental issues, it just seemed kind of impractical. And the cost is a thing that I couldn't believe when it was cost neutral in the report, because numbers I've heard have been in the tens and tens of millions of dollars for that thing. And with all respect to Squamish terminals and Mr. Hackett who's here, it just doesn't generate enough traffic now or in the foreseeable future to justify that kind of spending on a truck route. So it just didn't make any sense to me, at that rate. I mean, it dumps you on the wrong side of the railroad tracks, you either have to cross a whole rail yard to get down to industrial way, or you end up winding through a residential area to get back up to the highway, so it just didn't fit in a number of fronts. So happy you came to that conclusion. The one I'm having problems with is the Westminster Crossing now. My first term on council, which is going back two terms now, the decision was made by us, us being the planning committee, that there would not be a Westminster Crossing. And so they had to make a decision one way or the other, because there was all kinds of development proposals starting to spring up, and what do you do with that road right-of-way, and can you build to it, can you swap land for it, and so forth. So my concern, first of all, is that this introduces a level of uncertainty into the planning process down in that end of the peninsula. And now we have to reserve the land going across there with development proposals on both sides of it to accommodate that. The other is a question, is have you approached the Squamish Nation to see if they're all receptive to that? Because it lands on the other side of the blind channel, it would land on, if I read the map correctly, what is referred to as the Morpison plans, which are lands that are owned by the Morpison family and sold to Squamish Nation, and I haven't spoken to them directly, but I understand that that is for member housing or their reserve expansion. So I don't know if they're receptive to that at all. And unless they were receptive to that, then to me, it's just not an option. I mean, I think at best it's problematic, there's all the issues of landing at Third Avenue and all the other constraints for planning, but if they're not receptive to it and it's their land, and I don't even think we can exonerate, we have difficulty today in a preserved land out of chance, then it's just a monster. And so I questioned then whether we'd even want it there as a part of the long-term plan, just because of the uncertainty that it will play with the planning process for that whole corner or end of the Oceanfront Peninsula. So I'll stop there, I've got other comments in other places, but just on this, I'll stop there.
If it helps. So both the Westminster and the Pemberton Crossing were both identified in the Downtown Transportation Plan, which is where the origins for this came from. Obviously, with the lens of this study being a trucker's study, it was really piggybacking on what other, some of the other network connections where they're already considered or planned. Both Westminster and Pemberton, and me, for a matter of, both been studied in past works. In 2006, SNC completed some conceptual designs for both, Westminster and Pemberton. There was a series of action items, so I'm speaking to several points, I don't know if it's, but the Westminster Crossing, to your point, is challenging. The height of it, if you remember from in the past, I think at the time, the recommendation was a height of 13.2 meters, navigable waters may require that actually to be a lot higher, even upwards as high as 25 meters, depending on some of the uses and if you can relocate marinas or not. Anyway, so there's some variability there. So to your point of it landing down towards Third Avenue, like absolutely, you know, especially at the height of the structure and then coming back down, it's likely to bridge over top of Loggers Lane, which would keep that connection, but then you'd have to keep going likely north past Cattermore Slough and connect to the Third. The recommendations that we included regarding long-term, it was more reflective, these are options that have already been put on the table, and it was just recognizing when they may come in line if they do. Obviously, for several of these options, they require several agreements, they require a lot of things to fall into place to make sure that they happen, and, you know, requiring land or preserving land and everything else may feed into that, right? So there was options there about whether a crossing happened at Westminster or Pemberton. Westminster showed is one of the higher benefits just for traffic volumes to get in and out, largely because of, I think, proximity to Oceanfront. It's not front-loading everything all up towards the other end of Squamish or downtown Squamish, whereas Pemberton is obviously more the traffic source to navigate through the downtown area. But that's where these were kind of falling in place. Pemberton was landing a little more in the medium to longer term just because of adjacent developments and some of the pieces that may already fall into place a little earlier, that it may happen sooner than a Westminster Crossing. Your question about the First Nations land, in 2006, I think there was some early discussion then. I think there was some positive conversation at the time, but that was 10 years ago, so it's a conversation that had to happen.
And we did a, not a formal consultation, but we did chat back in, or it's a number of this year or so, and basically just asked, did they prefer that we just removed Pemberton Crossing completely from consideration? Or sorry, Westminster, thinking from consideration, and they said, no, they would consider it. They didn't say, yeah, they're fantastic, but they said, don't move it.
Thanks. And you do have more slides, correct?
I do.
Okay.
There's more questions?
Well, I just, I just thought this was a good slide to sort of stop on and understand why Seventh is taken off, but happy to move on if there are any more questions on this slide. Ted, can you wait?
Well, I just, just to the development that's going at the Old Mill site, whatever you call it.
What part?
So this proposal on Westminster will totally change that, because the road comes around the outside there.
No, it would not, as it's proposed here, it's not on the waterfront land, so.
That's correct.
There's a Heideland there, it's on top of the Heideland, correct?
Comes for all, the whole road comes through the First Nations.
Yeah, I thought there was a road right-of-way in there, but I just wanted to get, understand this slide for everybody, so, put on this slide.
I'm happy to wait.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Thank you for not doing Ted.
Actually, I have to follow up, they did actually update this since I put this in, but anyway, it doesn't matter. This is just to give you a rough idea of cost estimates, and these cost estimates for the different options, they do not, as you can see on the bottom, they do not include property acquisition. There were, environmental mitigation was considered, and then, but, and they are intended to include engineering contingencies, but they are very much Class D, like high-level cost estimates that are mostly provided for cost, for comparison purposes, just so that you have an idea in your mind of like, oh, that one's quite a bit more expensive than this one, this one is somewhere in the middle. So even, even just to keep Loggers Lane itself, even just to bring it up to more of a truck route standard, in fact, a road standard, really, we know that Loggers Lane is a little bit light on a few things, is still a few million dollars, so it's not insignificant, just to maintain what we have.
Maybe just to speak to a couple of the cost estimates, there's ranges on some of these, and as Laura mentioned, these are just kind of order of magnitude cost estimates. Obviously, for some of the more substantive investments, you know, things like Seventh Avenue or the Westminster Crossings or things like that, obviously, there's more study that has to happen on those to really assess all the impacts and requirements. Elements like Loggers Lane, for example, there's obviously, as an existing route, I mean, it is an existing route today, you know, so the investment could be minimal. Obviously, there's identified challenges with some areas, so for example, things like some of the intersection improvements, some signalization, you know, so accommodating some pedestrian crossing points, you know, some spot improvements, and then, you know, potential future accommodations for, you know, sidewalks or multi-pass or bike lanes as part of that. So, you know, through several of these options, there could be opportunity to leverage other means, you know, be it through development or other, so there could be a scalable element within each of these.
And on the Westminster one, it's including the whole access road into plus the bridge? The whole route?
Correct.
On all these, it's the whole route?
Right. And we'll say, most of these were informed from previous works as well. Obviously, past assessments from 2006 are far outdated, but there is reference from other works as well.
We're going to try to get through the slides. Unless it's a clarification on this.
On this particular slide, one thing that doesn't show up is the Pemberton Street Crossing. That may be the cost of, but my understanding is some or all of that is an amenity contribution for the waterfront land and development.
And they said that these costs don't factor in those?
No, but that's the thing that skews those numbers quite considerably, I think.
Okay. So I guess, actually, basically just two questions. I do have, if you want to see, I did some pro-con, like pros and cons of each option, if you guys want to dig into some of that detail a bit more, but it's kind of, I don't know if that's necessary, I guess is my point.
Thanks.
This is a perfect slide for my question, which is particulate matter, health impacts in having a truck route go through our dense population. And I don't think that it really addresses the fact that having diesel trucks run through a populated area, especially a high density, where the particulate stays in because you have higher density buildings, is my biggest concern with having our truck route stay in this region, in this area, or running through any of the populated areas, not putting them on the outskirts of town. I like the long-term options, and I'm wondering about the funding mechanism with, there's an immediate infrastructure grant for billions of dollars for transportation infrastructure. Have we looked into any of the federal granting mechanisms for building truck infrastructure?
So two questions. The report does talk about the particulates and health and that, maybe talk about that, and then grant opportunity.
Yeah, so, good question. There are studies that definitely put a correlation between...
It's not a correlation anymore, it's absolutely...
Okay, well, sorry.
It's a fact.
Anyways, link the two. The caveat to that is that they tend to be on a higher-volume corridors. That doesn't diminish the fact that it still exists, but such is the challenge that we always have within truck routes within urban centers. Obviously, the further we can push trucks out of those centers, you know, the better, but this is ultimately where we're concerned, and where we found opportunity to push this option forward.
So with our active transportation routes as well, this is also a corridor, it sort of considers where things are now, but not really considers the Oceanfront and active transportation routes to get down to the Oceanfront, and the fact that that corridor is going to be the most traveled corridor to get to the Oceanfront with high density. More truck density because of supplying the commercial aspects of the Oceanfront as well. How do, how do we look at moving people in a way that is environmentally friendly, that also, that protects them? And the trucks, we're going to have to completely separate our active transportation. We have the walkway down the Oceanfront, right, and eventually, it'll be able, we'll be able to separate people down on waterway, but still looking at sidewalks and bike transportation, is that considered in the truck route financing?
Well, that's, yeah, there's sort of two, Loggers Lane has two separate pieces to it, I mean, one is looking at it from the point of view of how do we make it appropriate for trucks, then the second piece is a whole retrofit, you know, upgrade of Loggers Lane, having a proper road width to work with, which, as far as I understand, we don't actually have, so we've got a bit of a cart-horse problem, I guess you could say, in that we keep trying to plan things, but we don't actually have certainty around what it is we're working with, because a road designed for an 11-meter road width versus a 22-meter open is a different animal. But I, I mean, from the point of view, though, we're, we want to have our active transportation corridor, for cycling anyway, along Third, along the waterway. We would like to have a path down Loggers as well, and again, we haven't been able to complete that vision because we don't have all that, that certainty around it yet. I don't think it's ideal to have trucks running next to bike transportation and pedestrian routes. At the same time, short of building a very expensive Westminster Crossing and sorting out all those land issues, and it's, it's what we have to work with for now, and, yeah, I mean, it's important, and I don't, I don't really know what else we can do at this stage. I mean, I mean, other than tap into infrastructure funding, for sure, and we are, we are keeping an eye on that, yeah.
So, so could you go back to the previous slide, the one that had, not that one, but the...
The odd?
No, sorry, so maybe there's a couple more slides, the one that had the back, the overhead map.
You don't have the options? Hold on, hold on!
That's the one. Sorry. There was a few previous. So if we take out, in the report, it talks about Loggers Lane being recommended as the short-term traffic solution, and I can understand that Pemberton Bridge isn't built yet, I'm not sure where in the development timeline, it might come out, not day one probably, is in the middle, is at the end, so there's some time constraints, we have to do something with trucks in the meantime. But the problem is, if you go back out a little bit, zoom out a little bit, if you take out the Seventh Avenue connector, which is now no longer one of your recommendations, then the only long-term plan is the Westminster Bridge, or Loggers Lane becoming not just a short-term, but also the medium-term and the long-term route to get up and then turn right and go over the Pemberton Bridge when it appears. And I'm not happy with that. I am not happy with trucks at Loggers Lane, I don't see that as a truck route in the future. For me, it's one of the, potentially the most beautiful streets in our town, it connects parts of parks and so forth, and I don't necessarily see that's the highest and best use for it as a truck route. And even in the short term, you know, when we're talking about the rail right-of-way, I would not be happy with taking part of that rail right-of-way and applying it to a short-term truck route to enable trucks in the short term. What I think we've overlooked is Third Avenue, and I appreciate there are considerations with Third Avenue, but having now driven it several times in the last couple of days since I started reading the report, we're talking about a two-block area that has residences on it, and even part of that is, had there been some commercial. And some of those residences have been built fairly recently, and some are old and probably in not-too-distant future will redevelop. I don't think we would ever go up past the seniors, the report notes that as we straight to that particular one, even though the red dots go up and around, you see the curl up around the mall area, that for me would not be a truck route. Trucks would come up Third Avenue and turn right at Pemberton, we just wouldn't let them go up there any farther. That route, I don't think is a surprise to anybody, we've been talking about it in some form or other for years. In fact, it was before I got on council that the extension of Third Avenue north of Pemberton was built, and it's quite wide now in the contemplation, I was told, of it being a potential truck route, and even recently, last couple of years ago... And even recently, last couple of years ago, we had a rezoning along the top there and we kept in the rezoning a right-of-way, a road right-of-way, which would have gone across the railroad tracks, which made no sense to me actually, because it dumps you off in the middle of two school zones and that didn't seem to make any sense for a truck route. But nevertheless, we, we kept those. So there's been discussion about Third Avenue as a potential truck route, going back since before I was on council. So that's 810 and maybe longer, I don't know when it first came up. So, so to me, it's always been one of the options. And if we take Seventh Avenue out of there and look at the Westminster Bridge, it's holy smokes, that's a long way away. Then I'm not happy with leaving Loggers Lane as the truck route for the foreseeable future, which could be easily 20, 25 years. So I think we are start looking at Third Avenue. And I would start looking at it sooner rather than later, before we significantly upgrade Loggers Lane to accommodate trucks. There might be other upgrades that it requires just for general traffic and so forth. Before we started doing that, I would rather spend the money on Third Avenue. Because today, you could run trucks down Third Avenue, they could turn right at Pemberton. And there's no Pemberton Bridge, of course, they could just turn left at Cleveland and go up to the highway. That, the advantage of that intersection, Third and Pemberton, is as you can see, it's not a right angle, so it makes it easier for trucks to turn either for right or left there, coming or going from town. So it's a bit more of an open angle. And so it may require fewer improvements in some of the other right angles that are scattered around in these plans. So I would, as I say, not be happy with starting to upgrade Loggers Lane for trucks. I would prefer to take that money and put it into Cleveland Avenue today. And we could, in the not-too-distant future, we could start using Third Avenue, I beg your pardon, we could start using Third Avenue as the truck route. But I just don't want to see trucks on Loggers Lane for the determined future. Construction, I understand, but I don't see them for the longest, long future. And I guess the other part, and we didn't get to it, and I didn't see it in the report, and I have to confess, I didn't read every line in the 200-plus pages, is what kind of growth is projected? Because the terminals, you know, we expect them to fill out and expand and so forth, but it will never be the port of Vancouver. It's always a fairly confined space, so there's a limit to how much traffic will come out of that. How much will come out of the oceanfront? There's no heavy industry conflict with the oceanfront. There's going to be light industrial and commercial, so there's going to be service trucks and things like that. But it's, once again, it's all like a whole business park. Most of the truck traffic in the future, I think, is going to come out of the business park, is outside in schools. So we're dealing with an area that has, I think, limits to how much truck traffic might come out of it. So once again, you know, the question is how much we can burn Third Avenue with? And I'm not sure that's too much to ask for two blocks of Third Avenue.
So can I just confirm with you? If you look at the red line, you're talking about just the part that goes on Pemberton?
No, I'm talking about going out of the terminals, straight up Third Avenue to Pemberton.
Yeah.
Right on Pemberton.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So Pemberton Park and the Third Avenue carpet, not the part in front of where the.
Nothing north of Pemberton.
Pizza, so that piece. So my question then, maybe through the staff, is in your analysis, where you have all the dots and the pi's, pi's, the analysis of Third Avenue, was that the whole thing or was that this portion of it? Or if we were just talking about this portion, would it change some of the values that might be determining the pi graph?
Great.
And I have, Ted and Susan.
So the two lines.
I think that's where Doug was trying to go.
Exactly. The two lines, you see, the one being Pemberton and the one extending further up to Bailey. Those are essentially just two different options for connecting back to Cleveland. The overall recommendation for Third Avenue was based on, one was traffic performance. It didn't perform that much different than Loggers, even though Loggers has the other turns. It's really the congestion that happens at Cleveland that, either Pemberton or Bailey, that causes challenges for trucks being that left turn a little bit and would cause additional congestion around that area. We obviously heard a lot of negatives from residents and businesses that were not in support of that option. That was probably one of the strongest points that we heard in our public open houses.
So this talks about the conflict with school groups and seniors access specifically. Certainly, school groups are going to be affected everywhere. Seniors access, it wouldn't necessarily, Pemberton Third wouldn't necessarily, so was that considered? Like, I understand.
And we had a very, I mean, just to sum this up, one of some of the reasons why we came to the conclusions that we did is that Third Avenue came out very strongly at the public consultations. In fact, they're the most well-represented group for sure around town in terms of Third Avenue residents. There's always a difficulty with imposing something different on an existing community. Loggers Lane is a community under development. And don't get me wrong, I still don't want to put trucks next to residences, that's, nobody wants to see that or do that. Having said that, that's something at least that can be planned for as part of those developments. Whereas the people who are living in single-family homes or have, who have businesses along, existing along Third Avenue, it's an imposition and, you know, that's the long and the short of it.
Chris, did you want to add to that?
No, that was precisely the point.
Well, I must say, these transportation studies are never a dull moment. And this is, I think, the fourth one I'm sat through. And I, I liked the report, I was all ready to come in and complain, and I thought, wow, that's a good report. But we're not putting trucks by residences on Loggers Lane, we're putting residents by trucks. Residents are coming now and the trucks are there. So, I mean, that's, that's something to remember. Pemberton Avenue, right now, we're planning 73 units on your own site. And there's worried about the truck study there, that we're not even going to be able to get the cars out of the driveway on that development because Pemberton's already so jammed up with all those little short streets. And man, if a semi tried to turn around those corners there, it never happened without taking out the bank and, anyway, so I worry about that. You're not going to come up Third and turn down Pemberton with a 60-foot trailer. So the Third, I mean, I always thought Third could go through with pedestrian overpasses and things like that. So my recommendation is, we got to leave the Seventh Avenue connector in there. We, you know, I mean, why take it out? It's cheaper. And even though the environmental people aren't happy with it, I think we have to leave it in there. As far as planning around a bridge, like Doug says, planning around a bridge. So if we're really seriously kind of going to put that in there, we better know where those off-ramps come and the big donuts that are going to go underneath to get people on and off them. You know, I mean, you can't just say, we'll put this in, because any road coming down there is going to be an 80-foot road right-of-way coming down to a off-ramp and an on-ramp and all sorts of development happening on the oceanfront lands. And so we have to know where all that stuff is on all these. I mean, I always figured, no matter what happened, in my long-term mind thinking, I thought Seventh Avenue's coming. Because there is no any, you know, and when you're transportation, people start looking, and of course, you look a lot longer term than I do, because I probably won't be here to see the bridge. You know, if we're going to go with that bridge, figure it out now. Let's figure out where all these turns come, let's figure out how big a truck's going to fit down underneath it at Loggers Lane and how high it's going to be. I mean, it's coming across off that cliff on the other side, I mean, that's going to be all attractive. So, I mean, it's, so I kind of smile, because I think we're right where we started. We've got these options that we haven't figured out the options. I mean, at least we got some numbers, but leave the Seventh Avenue in there for, if you want to take that off, because that, because, you know, the detractor on that is, oh, there's two rail crossings. That's the detractor on that.
Well, the main detractor that staff said on that was that it serves one purpose. It doesn't solve all our other problems with related traffic. It's just providing trucks access to the terminal predominantly. Whereas the other, whereas the other options actually solve some of the internal traffic issues. So it's a solution only for one piece of a greater problem. That was, and I think I would recommend that you update the pi graph to have that line with that type of consideration for all the options.
Although, anything coming from the north could be brought down that route. And anything coming from the south could be brought in the other.
But only trucks would be different, cars would be. And.
The other challenge is, the other challenge about.
It's a truck study.
Laura? The other challenge about the Seventh Avenue connector, because, trust me, I appreciate, when coming into this, I was like, oh, boy. Everybody's got an idea of what they think the truck route should be, and, yeah. But the point that I was going to make specifically about Seventh Avenue is that there's a, there's a fairly awkward existing connection, like that Bailey Street connection right now. And then the connection that goes to the Rilly Yards is an unpaved road that belongs to B C Rail, as far as I understand. And they don't want us on it or using it or, and then there's much, there's more estuary, there's more, like that. That route is, is an environmentally sensitive area. So it's not, it's not super straightforward. People tend to look at just the three kilometers of Seventh Avenue, but you're actually talking about a whole. And then, we still doesn't solve our traffic issue we're going to have of getting on and off the highway. Because that intersection at Cleveland is already failing on Friday afternoons and we're going to have to face that somehow, and that's not a truck thing, that's a traffic thing.
That's not a water problem. Okay, I have Susan, Karen.
Thanks, thank you. I think that really addressed a lot of the Seventh Avenue, because I've always, you know, you do look at that three kilometers of flat, straight area that have been designated as a transportation route. But the, the future of congestion really does need addressing. Third Avenue, I just, you know, separating a population through trucks is never a good idea, especially if it's, and the entire population uses Third Avenue as their active transportation to school. There's the crossing there and the shopping mall and your groceries and everything else. Fitting, fitting trucks in that area and Cleveland, like cutting them across Cleveland, that's, at that intersection, I just can't even imagine separating a population by trucks, especially with the density that we plan in the future. If we do plan the density by downtown, it'd be a conundrum to St. Elise. And the particulate in that area too, I would, you know, you're moving it right into the middle of town with VOCs and particulate for anybody with respiratory disease and closer to your most vulnerable population. Our entire seniors population is moving onto that corner in that area where the trucks would be turning and people with walkers and everything else trying to get into that area. I just can't even imagine telling them that we're going to put the truck route up Third and, you know, access to the entire downtown is through that area. So I'm not interested in bringing Third back for the exact reasons that the public has said and that staff has said. I'm hoping to the other, like, when you look at long-term planning for trucks, you're going to have to, we're going to have to pick somewhere that doesn't, and none of it makes sense, we're going to have to pick somewhere and plan for it. And you can point out all the complications and all the land use problems, but with transportation, you have to do, you have to pick a route and then you have to make the land use happen. So it's either as things become available, you acquire the land and you build as you can, as you are able to. And because we have to look into the far future, we can't keep saying, you know, it doesn't make sense for now. We have to pick something and then make the land use applicable and start doing the consultations together, the First Nations consultation or public consultation, whichever one of these routes. And, you know, I, you know, Westminster is in my neighborhood as well, but I wouldn't oppose having that because it's on the edge where there's carbon sink game and the ability for particulate to be absorbed. As opposed to a high-density area where you have cement and you don't have the ability for particulate to be absorbed. So I wouldn't mind anywhere past the downtown, you know, whether it be Westminster, but just on the edge of town, on this side of the tracks, on the other side of the tracks. But I really think we do have to look at that infrastructure funding because it's billions, it's not millions. And since the port is actually owned by the province, I think that's, and, and the, you know, it could be something that is viable with infrastructure money from the federal government. So I just, you know, when they put out that much money, since we do have a piece of infrastructure that is province-related, maybe, and fed-related as well, so as a transportation border, that I think that we put forward where we think of the two options and maybe even leave Seventh Avenue on there just as an option in order to retain, look for funding. And say, see what's viable as far as getting infrastructure money. And maybe that we're able to fund things through infrastructure funding.
Thank you. Karen?
Thanks, just a question. Laura, so what I like about the plan is that it really narrowed down all of the options. Because I think what we've been grappling with, and to Susan's point, you can't plan for three truck routes, you've got to plan for one. And so the question is, you know, Pemberton Avenue Crossing, I understand there's a bit of a CAC tied to waterfront landing going ahead. So, you know, 50 years from now, do you imagine that there's both a Pemberton Crossing and a Westminster Crossing?
Yes, that's the idea, yeah.
The downtown truck route study, or not the downtown transportation one actually identify both as potentials to happen at the same time.
And so as, so I would imagine Pemberton would get built first, so it would become a truck route where it went downtown. As Westminster got built, you would transition the truck traffic to the south, we'll leave that as car station.
That would be the idea, if that was how it all unfolded, yes.
Any typical bylaw for trucks obviously dictates that a truck is to use the truck route as the shortest path, right? And then from that route, the shortest path to whatever destination. So they would navigate through the longer paths through downtown if they didn't have to, they'd take the shorter route.
So to me, what this study shows us is sort of the evolution of where trucks are moving in the next little while, down to Pemberton Avenue, then they move to Pemberton Crossing and down Loggers Lane likely, and then eventually to a Westminster Crossing, which I like because it gets the trucks out of downtown, but I don't like because I think it ruins the view. So I'm, I don't want to put Third Avenue back in the mix, I don't want to put the estuary route back on the mix. I, I know we keep calling it Seventh Avenue, and as a newcomer to town, I don't understand why we call it that. Like, I know where people live on Seventh Avenue and that's not where this route goes, so it's very confusing what it means. We should just call it the estuary route, that's where it goes. So, so I like the options that are before us, but I think what, for me, is missing from the report, maybe I just didn't go through all the dependencies carefully enough, but, you know, what would be a timeline for the Westminster route traffic?
I mean.
The timeline for the report was 23 months, right?
It's, it's like a 20 to 30 year plan.
And so if we look ahead to where our carbon-based economy is going, we're not taking into account that battery, you know, like electric transportation may have been solved by then. Right now, we're still focused on diesel trucks belching out particulate matter. But in 40 years, we're going to have plug-in trucks, you know, batteries will be smaller, last way longer. We're going to have infrastructure that's totally different. So many more deliveries might be happening by drone, not by trucks. So, so, so those are the things that, there's a section in their report that actually doesn't contemplate changing technology around truck transportation. And I think it's important to at least acknowledge that as we evolve through this plan, from Loggers Lane, Pemberton Crossing to a Westminster Crossing, that so too is the technology and how we deliver and take, receive goods. So that, that would be the only thing that I would love to see added before we finalize the report and maybe change in the name of Seventh Avenue. Because I know it makes sense if you've lived here for a long time, but it actually doesn't make sense if anybody should.
It was actually Seventh Avenue, it's not supposed to be.
Exactly, like, I know where it is, it's just not this, so it's confused.
I, I think that's a great point about trying to plan for these super-long timeframes. And I, I think it's important, you focused on the technologies that trucks will have. We found in this, and we talked at the beginning of the presentation about, we have a traffic problem and not a truck problem. Really, the trucks will follow and will, and so it's the traffic that will dictate when we build. And we probably will build a bridge at some point. But as you say, it's difficult to anticipate exactly the timing of the build-out and what transportation will be like and what those options are like. So I wouldn't want to suggest that we're coming here and saying, 25 years, we're going to build this bridge, and we're totally confident that's just going to happen. This is a view on a likely scenario that we will meet in the next decades to have another traffic connection. And when we connect the traffic over the blind channel in some way, probably at Westminster Crossing, looks like today. Could be somewhere else, depending on what happens the next couple of decades. Then that's where the logic plays, put trucks down unless we replace trucks.
I just, to make it easier for our council and future councils, is having that short, medium, long term so that we can secure railways, so that, you know, waterfront landing goes ahead. They know that there's a truck route to the medium term going next to that property. And so all that design and planning can go into that so that we're introducing neighborhoods to existing truck routes, and plans for truck routes, rather than building these beautiful neighborhoods and then 20 years from now going, oh, by the way, there is going to be a truck route there. And so that, to me, is, we actually need to narrow our focus so we can plan appropriately for it and get the developers with these pieces willing to plan properly for it too. So I want to see us constrain our options, not let's leave it all on the table. Let's tighten it up.
Thanks. So just cognizant of time, you have one more agenda item. It's not an urgent matter, just wanted to make sure it was in council's mindset. Just give me a second, Ted. So just cognizant of time, it's quarter to, this is when our agenda was supposed to be wrapping up. But I think we have the ability to continue for another 20, 25 minutes easily. And I do want to make sure the public knows this. If you want to speak to it, please just put your hand up. Ted?
Well, just on the estuary connector, or the 10th Avenue connector. You know, someday we're going to build a dike there.
That's not a given, but...
Well, it's talked about in here for a bit, but, you know, I mean, we have to protect the downtown. We've got to build a dike. So I'm just saying, I just don't think we should take that particular one down either.
So Ted, can I just ask Chris to respond to the diking question on the estuary connector?
Yes, please. And this is actually an item that, as Laura said, we talked in detail last week. How's it been updated in the report yet? Is, we found that the truck route study said, hey, we might be putting a dike there, and if we put a dike there, we should put a road on it. And then the diking report said, hey, we might be putting a road there. And if we're going to fill up, put a road there, may as well make it high enough to make it a dike. Both reports said, but if we're not doing that, then it's not really a good idea. So we actually looked at and pulled out the integrated flood hazard management plan and went in detail. The town dike is a better option, and that is what's recommended. The only way we would ever turn our backs on that and go and build a whole new dike out in the estuary is because somebody's spending 40 to 50 million dollars of road trucks. So when we looked at, when we looked at it, it was, both reports say that the estuary dike and the estuary road is actually a bad idea. And just left it open because they thought the other report might be saying something different. So at this point, we're fully pulling back from that and saying there's no good reason to put a road or dike in the estuary.
And then where you talked about the road that goes through, the road that goes through the B.C. Rail property. Well, that B.C. Rail property, the North Yards, it could change hats. It's not, you know, I mean, so, and we have dealt with B.C. Rail on our case. How about the road that goes through the First Nations property? I mean, I'm just finding it incredible that we're planning a 30-year project going through somebody else's property that we have no control over. And you'd think we'd have to get, you know, like you said, you had a discussion with them, and they thought, ah, yeah, we might look at it. Well, that could become where you've got a $75 million road there. That could become $110 million because we have to buy property that there's a real, real high value on it and aren't really interested in selling. But I just don't think we should take that one out.
We've said it twice, and we're going to do it now.
I don't know what the advantage is, is taking it out.
I do agree with Karen and Sue about the looking, the long-range forecast of looking at crossing the blind channels. I think in the end, that's going to be the answer to the problem. But I also agree with Doug. I think the gentrification of Loggers Lane is ongoing and will continue and will continue. And having that, I mean, in the short term, it's great to use it still as a truck route. But I think in the long term, it's not going to be viable any longer with the traffic amount, especially the amount of foot traffic that's going to go on and crossing through there to the parks, et cetera, and biking down that corridor. So I think it's best to start looking out and saying, you know, this is what we need. We're going to need this for the future. Let's start looking at how we require those lands. Where might it go? What it might look like? What's going to be required? And interchange, as Ted has said, and start really honing in on that. So that's the final solution.
Is anyone in that audience want to, yeah, Eric, come on up?
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Again, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Squamish District Forestry Association. I am also a member of the Squamish Estuary Management Committee. First of all, and I'll refer to page numbers. On page five, there is a reference to the Squamish Estuary Management Committee. Although it doesn't come out and say this directly, it should just be clear to you today that there has been no referral of this truck route study to the Squamish Estuary Management Committee. Just in case there are any other impressions otherwise. Whether to change the status of the transportation corridor is, of course, a central issue for the estuary plan and for the estuary management committee. So we have seen no, there's been no internal discussion within the committee and no referral from the district to the committee of this truck route study. That's just a point of information. Secondly, on page 17, there is reference to major truck destinations for commercial vehicles in Squamish and a list of five destinations. Missing is Site B. It's probably an oversight, but I'd just like to emphasize the significance of that for the purposes of this study. Other destinations are missing too, but I'll just highlight Site B. On the next page, page 18, is a chart, a map that you've seen on your overhead. Site B is colored blue. Now, this happens too often in district, not only district maps, but Newport development maps, where Site B, including the presently operated by Squamish Mills and Westbar, is colored blue for ocean. That doesn't help our discussions and prompting and planning needs when we continue to do that. So Site B is missing there. And really, the only reference to Site B is on page 28, and I'll just read it. "Site B truck traffic capacity needs to increase by 60 to 75% to handle a relocation of the Gerbaldi Forest Products facility on Galbraith Avenue." So this is the only reference to Site B truck access issue. The issue is really not developing bigger capacity, it's safety. The capacity is there. The reference to 50, 60 to 75%, that would include forest industry traffic. But there's other kinds of traffic that could evolve there in future. We should keep this in mind, that this study report is an opportunity to inform and remind the Ministry of Transportation of this critical safety issue, the highway access to Site B. And it's an issue today. We are having difficulties bringing that issue to their attention for action. And we would appreciate, do appreciate the district's support ongoing. And we know you, we have it from you. But this report is an opportunity to highlight that. And so I just wanted to bring to your attention that reference in the report. And the safety issue, truck access to Site B, is one of the things that needs to be resolved before any facility relocation can occur to Site B from Galbraith Avenue. I'll leave it at that for now. There is a reference in the study, however, to a potential barge facility, and this is part of the transportation corridor in the estuary management plan. And that is an important issue for truck planning. There are diverse scenarios for barge terminal development here and business opportunities and needs. Squamish terminals is part of that. But I think that discussion is probably best handled at a marine strategy, but it does affect truck traffic planning. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe, we don't have to run away here unless you're scared of me, but definitely. I mean, maybe a question to staff and contractor. This was specifically a downtown truck route study. There's a number of truck route issues, including Site B. But Eric did point out that there's downtown trucking issues today that are connected to Site B and access. And if, for example, the logs that's down on Galbraith moved to Site B, it would necessitate the upgrade. So I'm just wondering, even though it's not within the scope of the report, the downtown, is it worthwhile to more clearly make that connection? And as Eric knows, we've been, we've approached MOCA a number of times about that intersection, talking about the problematic aspects to it. But it may be worthwhile to make sure it's backed up in this document, even though it's outside the scope? Or maybe my question is, is there a danger in extending it a little bit to see the ripple effect of Site B in the downtown context of trucks? Do you want to say that word more bett- more better?
Well, it might perhaps be useful just to mention the, and this is information provided to the study team, and we're really happy with the communication opportunity we had with the team. At peak season, it's 20 trucks per day, up to 20 trucks back and forth each to the Galbraith Avenue log trucks. If we were working at capacity, it might be something like 28. You know, at best, 30 trucks per day, peak season. So that's the, just to give you a picture of the impact.
In and out.
Yes, in and out.
So it'd be...
30 and 30.
30 and 30.
Yeah.
I mean, I could see it being added to the list of major destinations because in terms of the number of places around, like in the immediate environments of downtown that have heavy truck traffic, Site B is one of those. So, but having said that, we do need to be mindful of the scope of the project, which, like as you said, it was a downtown truck route study. So we need to be fair to that.
I think the potential link would be if we can help facilitate the move to Galbraith by improving the intersection with the highway there and increasing safety for current and future volume. And that will reduce the truck volume along Loggers Lane.
Yes. There's a synergy there. Yeah.
Maybe we can just make sure we connect those dots. I think that's useful.
Yeah, so let's just pretend none of the land in the downtown is owned by anybody. But we own it all. Like, for example, expropriating little corners here and there and make it all work. Do you ever do that? Like, let's take Loggers Lane straight through and tie it into, tie it into the intersection that goes into the highway? And then put an overpass thingy in the highway so Loggers Lane goes straight through and out? We'd have to take out the corner of the mall? You know, I mean, do you do that? Like I was looking at the bridge coming over. I mean, you're wrapping all around. Why don't we just go at the intersection where all the trucks come out on the highway, where there's already a light, and bring the bridge in that way? Or do you just look at the roads that are existing that we own now?
Maybe the easiest way, the options that we had, that we worked with on this were ones that were previously identified for other reasons as well.
Previously identified, yeah. Because we might be able to take out a few burners.
Most of these, as you mentioned, were predicated on other things, like the traffic issues that were already identified in other reports. So this is more of the truck routes aligning with those other alignments that were already kind of pre-existing.
So I'm wondering where we go from here? Because if I've heard everything correctly, Loggers Lane, or not Loggers Lane, Seventh Avenue is remote at best. And Westminster is the only long-term strategy. And essentially, otherwise it's status quo. There's really nothing changing. One day, a bridge will show up in Pemberton Avenue. Trucks can turn right on Pemberton Avenue instead of making a way back up to Cleveland. And that will take some of the pressure off Cleveland Highway 99 intersection, which is, which is one of the pinch points. So if there's going to be an alternative, it seems that it's going to be, unless everybody jumps on board with my Third Avenue selection, but I haven't heard that yet. So it seems that the Westminster option is the only other option. Fair enough. If that's the case, then to finalize this report, I think we need to nail it down. As others have suggested, figure out exactly what land might be required to put a bridge across there, maybe a couple of different height scenarios, and get the consent of the First Nation, the Squamish Nation, to somehow line it around their reserve lands or their potential reserve lands and find out what's involved in it. So it's a meaningful option. Because otherwise, the report almost doesn't matter with respect. It just really, I mean, what else is in there? So if we did do that, and if we were able to pin it down, then I think we have other options, one of which is, do we even build Pemberton Avenue Bridge? Or do we take those resources and put them into Westminster Avenue now and start focusing on that particular option? Because I don't know in the development, and we're still discussing that development, when it's supposed to happen, the timeline might not be for 10 years in the middle of development, middle of, or something like that. I don't know. But I don't think it's going to show up on day one of that development. So we've got some time, but do we put resources into that? Or do we start focusing the planning on another place? So otherwise, I'm not sure where the report goes to begin.
That brings up a couple of questions about how to evaluate option C versus option A in terms of not just truck route, but traffic management. And are we trying to bring people into the downtown more? Are we trying to bring people, is it, you know, what's driving it? Trucks, traffic, both? Gary, Chris, Linda's at hand?
But I'll let my expert start.
Couple of things here is that traffic's driving it. That's clearly what we're hearing. In terms of, I think the report needs to identify those actions. I don't think it needs to undertake those actions that Councilorice has suggested. Because the other options have the same burden. Can we build a bridge at Pemberton? Can we get the requisite right-of-way across the waterfront land? So those burdens exist for the other options. So I think rather than burdening the study with solving those options or those issues, at best, the study needs to identify what those remaining issues are. I think if we try and burden the study with solving those issues, we're never going to get there.
You go, you try to say it.
Very well said. I'll add the more mundane, that the study, the scope of the study was to identify and look at the higher level and to trim things down. And the study is nearing the end of its budget, possibly at the end of its budget. And I think really what we're looking at now is, okay, phase two, we narrowed it down. I think there is a real tension on Loggers Lane as far as timing goes. Because Loggers Lane is becoming this new jewel in the ground and building up. And we'd like to move the traffic over there as quickly as possible. And so I think the next piece of the puzzle is an integrated downtown traffic study to look at, because this is driven by traffic and not by trucks. And that's in the budget for this coming year, and hopefully soon to be approved budget. And then in 2018 budget, I would envision coming forth with more funding to look at, to get really granular in both propositions and look at land and start really seeing what a design should look like. And at that point, we can look at what federal funding can we get? What time, what does that really look like? When does it start to make sense from a demographic standpoint?
Do you have any to add, Linda?
You know, just a little bit, although I don't think I can do much more. Very, very quickly, I wanted to point out, and Laura did mention it, but I'm not sure necessarily was heard loud and clear with the public, is that with due respect to Councilorice, the idea of status quo with Loggers Lane is entirely correct. Because what this study tells us is that in terms of continuing to use Loggers Lane, currently our road right-of-way is 11 meters, I believe, on Loggers Lane. And to continue to have trucks and traffic and pedestrian and make it a true integrated road for all of those users, we need 22 meters. And so that definitely is informing us moving forward on that, in the short term.
Yeah, it's not status quo, it's maybe an organization aspect. It's getting a little bit of that stuff. Susan and Ted, and then I'd like to try to wrap up the conference.
And what I was going to point out exactly is what Chris pointed out, is we really need, you know, we've done a truck study and an active transportation study, and now we're going to do a traffic study, which I'm appreciative of, because really, we don't understand the movement through our community. We look at downtown all the time, but it's starting to be, you know, how are we going to move traffic as, as we are densifying everywhere, especially along a transportation corridor, a government road? How are we going to manage traffic? But I'd like to make sure that, I mean, all of these things inform each other, but we still do them in isolation. We hire people to look at trucks, look at traffic, but our active transportation, and to Karen's point of looking to the future of transportation, is really, you know, autonomous vehicles are supposed to be within ten, ten, you know, a very short term right now. We're looking at ten years to have hubs of autonomous driving cars that are going to relieve a lot of that transportation. Do we plan for land use for that? Do we, you know, how do we integrate those future thoughts of transportation modalities into our land use strategy? Because if there's going to be autonomous vehicles, we need to hub them somewhere, we need to, you know, and that may be in manufacturing sector, so it all happens all at once. And that is, you know, going in the States to all these transportation, to the, you know, going to transportation meetings in the States with, with all of the vendors there, they are all talking about land use strategies. I mean, Amsterdam is undergrounding all their roads and leaving all their road, all their infrastructure on top, and where their infrastructure goes, they're putting their cars underground. So I think we have to do some forward thinking like that, and even though it may look like pie in the sky now, we all know that how fast technology changes, and how looking at transportation is going to require understanding the tech, the, the changes in technology, and how our land use planning happens alongside of that and plans for the future of that. And even if something is possible, we need to be setting land aside and making sure that we can actually address those future needs.
Thanks. Ted?
Yeah, good point. You know, when you think of Loggers Lane and a potential parking arcade there, you've kind of looked at a little bit, that puts the road underneath if it comes across or not. But I, I also hope that, I mean, obviously we're going into a different realm of studies. I think that Pemberton or Cleveland and ninety-nine is one of the big problems right now, and, you know, am I just trying to envision all these vehicles going in Loggers Lane, coming over to Cleveland, and all that kind of stuff? We took out the end of the mall and the A and W, did an interchange somehow there, you could be sending all the trucks down one road and all the cars down the other. So hopefully, when you go into the next phase of studies, taking out a little bit of that mall is, would be a lot cheaper potentially than other things.
Okay, so I think firstly, as for Counselor Chappell said, in next year's budget, we need a Bristol ball, and Captain, please.
Tell them on the other side.
But in all seriousness, I think I'm generally hearing some consensus driving, not consensus, or at least some majority, hinting that, that the options as presented above are where we'd like to, the report to focus. I haven't, I, I, I agree, I think Third Avenue has a whole other slew of challenges and problems that are easier, more easily addressed on Loggers Lane, so happy to focus the short term on Loggers Lane. And I think that's generally, besides Counselor Ray's, he's still sort of mulling it over and it's great, but generally what I heard from Council, and just, I think, nodding, generally heard that Third Avenue and Seventh Avenue and Main Street, or Estuary Avenue, Main Street are pulling out, they're not hitting enough of the marks. I, I would suggest that you do one more band of analysis in this graph to show, and I don't know how to communicate it, but to multifunction maybe, or, you know, function, multifunctionality of the road in terms of the analysis, so it's a little clearer, particularly why Seventh Avenue connector isn't being considered in this report, for example. I'm not sure I agree that we need to have everything dialed in. I think it would be impossible in this report to have the, what we, the Westminster Street completely figured out. I think as Counselor Elliott and Counselor Chappell have said, who knows what our needs are going to be and how we're going to be delivering people, products, all those things in thirty years, and there's a lot of, I think we need to keep the options open in terms of our planning and our understanding, but at this point, I'm not sure if it's worth the money to, you know, figure out exactly which inch of land we need to purchase and all that. The Option C, the Junction Avenue one, is, is a fairly, it's going to come in the fairly near term to medium term. It is a product of the, the development over there, they, they, they have to deliver something there. I can't remember if there was a cost contributed to that, and that we have to, anyway, it's, it's possible, it's there. So this, this report is good and informing exactly what we need to deliver, and what we need to get delivered with regard to that proposal, and figuring out how to integrate that into the downtown. The challenge is, is that, you know, if you're really only focusing on what the terminals need, you might choose a different option that if you're looking at, what does the Ocean front, what does terminals, what does the downtown, what does the North yard, what does Site B, you know, all these things integrating into the decision-making, and how do you pick off the most boxes and hit the most marks on that? Because we can't afford to do them all, and we shouldn't do them all, we'd be overkill anyway. So I think we all have to take some consolation in this, we're, we're not talking about the truck route like you see in big cities, or even in industrial, or, you know, you look at the truck routes in Vancouver, and they're, they plow right along right to residential areas on big arterial roads, but, so we're, we are sort of talking apples and oranges, and the magnitude, as the report outlines, of the truck traffic in our community is relatively small compared to the, who we are on the road infrastructure and the amount of traffic that's happening on those roads. So I think, I think, and what I'm hearing is, I think generally, I think Councilor likes the report, we want to add those things that we talked about, and those considerations, and, and looking to Council, if the report comes back to Council in a council meeting with those changes for us to deliver, is that good enough? With those additions?
Well, I'd still like to see that Estuary would stay in.
But I think you're in the minority, so.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the report still references it, but in terms of our planning, as, as Chris says, you know, one was driving the other, and neither was really, I think it was the best option, so.
But perhaps to help is that the estuary management plan has always considered a right-of-way to there. Not canceling that out, it's still just there, it's just in imagining the truck route of the future, it's currently not there. So it's not that we're, it gets erased from everyone's sort of idea.
Well, you know, and I, I look down, you know, like fifteen years ago, and this may become starting to become a reality, but, you know, in thinking of a bridge going across the blind channel and hitting a bluff and going all around and up on a bluff, I think is that the best place to do a bridge, or, once we commit to a bridge, it might be farther south. It might be where it's nice and flat going across, coming across just north of the logs or, so, so all, you know, that one, I even, even when I look at it as a long-term plan, we haven't crunched the numbers and we haven't looked at the turnarounds.
And we're not committing to anything.
That's right.
We're just leaving it open as an option.
So, leaving that open for adoption, that's why I just think I, I.
Yeah, you've expressed it four times now. Welcome.
And I just wanted, my name's Gary Hanson, with CN Rail.
Hi, Gary.
Hi, and I just wanted to comment about the Estuary route. Basically.
Thank you for calling it Estuary.
Back in nineteen eighty was when we had our agreement with the district, Squamish, supporting that, that access for the district, but it was only based on it being emergency access only, and it was supposed to be gated. And I don't know how it's evolved over the years to be open for anybody's use, but it's really supposed to be used for that, and.
You're talking about the one that goes at the end of Bailey Street?
That's correct. Yeah, across those two crossings, where we have our Y that goes to, one of the tracks goes to the Squamish terminal lead there. So basically, we reviewed the proposal internally, and we commented back to Laura that basically we wouldn't be in support of it, so, you know, it's possible, like, you never know if, you know, you formally requested it through talking to our operations superintendent or, or our GM, you know, maybe they would, you know, under certain conditions, support it, but currently our decision is that we wouldn't, so.
And just a bit more history on that, when the Buckley Crossing was closed, Buckley used to go across and attach to the government back in ninety-six, ninety-five, something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember.
One of the discussions there was the challenge of cutting off the town, and, and there was talk of actually, in that deal, paved, that DC Rail at the time would actually pave Bailey Access Road to Government.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so there's all sorts of mutations over the years in terms of.
That would all have to be reviewed if you didn't want to pursue it further.
Yeah.
But other than that, I just wanted to also mention that any of these routes, definitely the, the crossings that are affected, they should be looked at, you know, in detail, just to make sure that they're appropriate for handling, you know, increased truck usage and also safe for the other users. I know that Cleveland Avenue, that's a key crossing that we've already raised with your engineering department about, like, all of your crossings, getting great crossing safety assessments done, which I think have been done, but we haven't seen them, so it's something that we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to get together on and, and review all of the, all of the crossings. Some of them aren't up to standard, and Cleveland Avenue is one of them where, because of that track through Loggers Lane, that's been removed. The warning system at Cleveland Avenue, it needs to be reconstructed so that it, that track, once it's removed, because we still have to keep the mast legally, we have to keep the warning system the way it's configured now, until that track is officially removed from the road, and then we can put the mast in their appropriate locations, so.
Okay. That's great. So talk to, Chris, he's your man, and thank you very much.
No problem. I guess there's something else, while I was here. I'm in dreams.
So I'm wondering if we can pass a motion that we accept the draft downtown route with the comments and additions that were talked about here, and that a final draft be brought forward to Council for consideration. Chris?
Can we just be clear about what those con, what the comments are? Do you, do you, sorry, I, I should be doing this by passing notes and not, and not, you know, in front of the mics here, but are you guys clear on, on what those comments are, or would you like to do a quick readout?
Can you do a quick, quick readout? Would that be possible?
Yeah, I wrote some notes. One was identifying Site B on the map, not to specifically address within downtown context though, but there was a couple of map edits that were noted. There was a comment about providing some commentary around future changes in transportation with regard to electric vehicles, and how that may affect future considerations of the truck routes. Adding a line item on the account evaluation about, and we'll find an appropriate word for it, about checking more boxes than one, multi-linked projects. And providing some clarity on future directions towards some of the options, with the example of Westminster Bridge, about what the future actions of those may be.
More specific, I don't, we're not going to be able to do a full analysis of them.
Yeah.
Does that cover anything, Karen? Just changing Seventh Avenue to the Estuary.
Do you know why it's not called the Estuary Route? Because I, I know what you're saying, that's initially what I was calling it, but then, see, like, this is the Estuary, like, the land we're on right here, and, so the trouble is that all of downtown is the, is conservative.
So let's find another name, other consent.
Yes, I know.
How about, how about Western Route? The West, or?
We can, we can certainly coin something else, I'm just letting you know why it ended up on Seventh, because I didn't like it either, and then I was like.
I know, I know, we're all, we're always in the Estuary, but, yeah. You get someone who's actually is on Seventh Avenue, you're going, he's there, he's coming here. Okay, so that's the motion, and it's been moved in second? Moved by Peter, seconded by Karen, called the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So there is the, I just wanted to give everyone the heads-up that the deadline for submissions for the OMLGA resolution is March twenty-fourth. We don't have to discuss them today, just wanted to bring everyone's attention again, and we'll put it on a feature agenda. If you, if you have any suggestions, send them to Robin or Linda, Linda, Robin, and we'll make sure we discuss them and report. So a motion to terminate, moved by Karen, seconded by Peter, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries.